First thing is to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Is there anybody that has anything to say about the minutes of the last meeting?
Well, I would like to look behind me and make a motion.
Yeah, second.
Yeah, second.
Second by record, on my records. All in favor?
Aye.
All's motion carried. Approval of the agenda, if there's any additions. Anybody? I have none.
Feel like I'm forgetting something, but I, uh...
We are forgetting something.
I feel like I'm forgetting something, but I was, I can't really remember, uh, what it is exactly, so I guess no.
Good job. No, there's a couple things, but I'm not gonna answer.
Gardner?
Nothing.
Miller? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The agenda approved? All the unfinished business, is anything that needs to be taken care of?
I mean, the only thing, just to give an update on this one item, is I've asked a couple people on the Housing Authority Board.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's like anything else, it's just tough sell trying to get people to serve on a, kind of a minor board, so.
Kate Holzer was interested.
Katie, Terry's wife, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, there you go.
So, are you gonna talk to her?
I don't know, you wanna talk to her, or you don't?
Yeah, I can certainly talk to her, that's fine, I mean, I... She doesn't live in my district, but I don't think that's a requirement, it's just...
She will be in your district.
That's true, actually she is, yeah, actually that is true, I never... Yeah? I mean, I'm fine with that, I got no problem, I just, I was, I was only asking people in my district, so, which, but I was ready to start presenting the idea of if we don't find somebody in my district, then, uh, then we'd have to... But, yeah, but she's actually going, pretty much practically is a resident of the district, so...
They sold them.
Did she tell you that she was interested, or...
She talked to one of the other members on the board, and he asked her, and she said, "Yeah, I'm kinda interested in that," so...
Well, good. Don't discourage anybody as well, you know.
Well, I was actually gonna suggest, for the sake of time, why don't we just nominate, or she could decline the nomination, if she doesn't want it. So, I guess I would make the nomination.
You wanna make another?
I'd nominate Kate Holzer for the Ennis County Housing Authority.
Okay.
Well, I would second that, yes.
Second by Mr. Vandemore? You wanna do a roll call of that, or just a general?
Yeah, I mean, we can do a roll call, just...
Do a roll call on the Kate Holzer appointment, as the authority for the board member of housing, to replace Mel John over 2024 into 2029. Okay.
Kay?
Maygram?
Yes.
Vandemore?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
Terry? Yes.
So, I mean, just for the sake of discussion, too, I mean, if she wants to decline, I'm, you know...
You don't know, okay.
But it just would make more sense if we're here, just let's just nominate her, if she accepts it, then we're moving forward, rather than...
Who's gonna talk to her?
Who's gonna put one on?
I can talk to her, I, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. She'll be good. She'll be good.
Yeah, no, right.
Next item on the agenda is the County Park Board meeting. Rice? You guys wanna sit out each side?
I think you might be waiting for some people at this, until nine, ten. I, I think somebody from the Lytton City Park Board was gonna come, and I don't know exactly why, but...
Oh, okay.
And, uh, maybe Kintyre usually, I don't know if Cor Schmitt usually shows up for Kintyre, too, so...
Oh, you could do something, huh, and do miscellaneous?
Do it on the miscellaneous, I guess, if you have work there, yeah. Go to a, well, the miscellaneous, utility permit for South Central Region of Water to install a one-inch little water lane crossing a mile and a half, is that One and a Half Street, Southwest, Section 11, Township 132, Range 78?
Generally, Russ looks at those, so if you...
He did, I've gotten his...
They're signed off?
Russ looks at?
Usually the roads that pretend, it looks at the road processes, and if they sign off on it, it's usually...
Have he signed off on it?
He did sign off, and then you guys still promote him signing off.
Okay. Oh, good. So then, the utility permit for Kemal electric power underground primary cable underground roads on 78th Street, Southwest, and Main Avenue is also approved by Russ, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We need a motion to...
Do you need a motion to that stuff to approve?
Yeah.
Can we do a vote? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the utility permit for South Central Region of Water and for Kemal electric.
All second. Second by Vandemore, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You wanna go on to miscellaneous?
Yeah.
One of the miscellaneous items is a plot of irregular description, Lot F of Lot 5, in southeast quarter, southwest quarter of Section 6, 130, Township 132, Range 76. Where's that located?
Just north of town, um, of Lytton, Robert Johners.
On the hill there, right?
Yeah, they're plating out this four-acre piece, we pulled it in after, right there.
Okay.
There's no issues, actually, is it four acres? Yeah, three, 3.25 acres, and they have the easement on the plat, so there's access to it, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the plat.
I'll second, second. Maygram? Miller, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, this plat of Track 1, South half of the southeast, Section 8, Township 131, Range 74, Fifth Prime Meridian. Where's that at, then? Where's that located?
That's kinda in Jim's neighborhood, isn't it?
This Liar's.
Getting closer, though.
Church there, Liar's, um...
Oh, yeah, no, that's, okay.
That's southeast.
That's west of Larry Liar's, right?
Oh, they're just plating out the yard.
West of the St. Allois's Church, right, or?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Red Star's Church.
Okay.
Yeah, they're plating out this yard right here, so...
Who's doing that job? Larry's?
No, Jeffrey.
Oh.
Yeah, these guys.
Francis Gettle, okay, yeah, yeah, he's in Fargo. Okay.
I'm gonna...
Motion?
Somebody wanna make a motion to approve? Gardner makes a motion to approve? I have two. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Vandemore seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 3 is a plot of irregular description, auditors Lot A, northeast quarter of Section 8, 130, Township 130, Range 76. Well, this gotta be Francis Gettle again, or no?
It was Chausseks.
Gene Chausseks, yeah?
Yeah. The parcels are already, look like that, but they're described by deeds and bounds, and the deeds, you know, like this one's track 560 by 650, but they're just plating it, surveying it, and then just giving it its names, I think, for simplicity, so...
So that's the yards?
That's the yard they tell their back on this old land, okay, yeah.
We're, we're doing the B wrong one, too, right on the hill.
A and B, B's, uh, the east side of the road, the trees going up to it.
Chaussek family kept it?
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah?
No problem with it.
There's no issues with it?
I'll make a motion to approve, on number 3 and 4.
3 and 4?
Yeah, tracks A and B, that's A and B.
Gardner makes a motion to approve plat, or item 3 and 4 on the plat. Is there a second?
No second.
Miller seconds, all in favor?
Both of them.
Both of those.
Both of them are related, though, right?
Yep.
They're touch, okay. Yeah, I am in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, then, there's...
Now you're going, buddy.
You wanna do it?
Nine, ten.
Yeah, you're up, Rice. You're up, get up, this is...
Like that.
So, I think the proper way, do we, do we adjourn the county meeting and enter into the county board, park board meeting?
We never heard adjourn.
Or not adjourn, but...
Enter the...
So, we, do you have to?
Well, just, there's a little bit of a process there, because technically, you're not the chairman of the county park board, meaning Andy Rice is generally, is the, cause he's the park board.
Should we just, what, I pull back and turn the media over to...
Well, I, we're just, basically, we're, we're temporarily suspending the county meeting in order to, uh...
Do the county board meeting?
Yeah, to call the meeting in order for... Right, there's just a little bit of a process there for the minutes and stuff, so...
Really, you took care of it.
Okay, I guess it's handled, that, as long as everybody understands what's going on, I guess, I believe, so...
My, my...
The mayor's turned all his...
Hey, I'm just trying to help out, actually, you're on your own.
I appreciate that.
I'm here next.
He's turned over to the county park board.
No, I'm just not gonna say no, see what happens when you say stuff, then you get in trouble.
I'm throwing a flag, I'm not one of them.
I still haven't learned to shut my mouth.
Okay, then, we'll call the county park board meeting.
You all got, I got, uh, copies of minutes from last meeting and stuff, I can't read you.
Yep.
Have a motion to approve, or do you have any additions or corrections? Want to approve the minutes, huh?
Motion.
There's no old business, so we'll move on to new business.
We need a second on that motion for the minutes.
I'll second it. You need a roll on it? You need a roll call of it, or a vote?
No.
No?
You just stay there.
I'll just stay right there.
You got to make, you got to make a motion. I told him he's not the chairman, he don't listen, I don't know what to do there.
Okay, then. You have the stuff you've done, didn't you?
I gave you guys all copies of, um...
Yep.
Yep.
Budgets and stuff. The 2025 budget, usually what we discuss is the distribution to the cities, and you guys have $18,000 in there. I don't know if we need to do any updates to Langley's Bay, we just had them approved by the Corps, we had to have sent in our plan, and it was approved by the Corps, but I don't know if you guys wanna put anything away, um, for 2026, for any chip ceiling or anything? If you want me to keep it in the budget for '26, I can continue doing that, I, I appropriate $15,000 all the time, and I, there's another $15,000 in there for miscellaneous and water line, I know there was a talk at one time, we're doing a new...
Rural water.
Well, we're going with rural water or something.
Well, I, I, I think as of now, the water situation's kinda handled.
Yeah.
We should have some money in there, though, because...
Never mind.
We, well, not only we were paying, like, an annual payment, like we did last year, and they were, they were fine with that, but also, with any well maintenance, I'm sure they're gonna want us to help out, so, I mean, we should keep a little bit of money, just maybe a few, a few thousand bucks, in case, like, a well pump goes out, we can cost share with them, I think that'd be fair.
Okay.
And then, I, I think we should be probably reserving some money for Langley's, since we are responsible for the pavement going in, we know how expensive pavement gets, hopefully, or likely, we would probably get some cost share funding, but more likely, we'll need some kind of match at minimum, so, we should have some kind of reserves built up, cause it, you build it up for 10 years, and it'll get wiped out in one year, if you do a major, any kind of project, you know how it is, so, I, I'm not saying a specific amount, but not that we just, I think we should be reserving, it wouldn't be a horrible thing to have 50 grand laid aside for that water, it won't take long to burn it up, if we have to do anything, so, it's just my opinion.
We usually just put in $15,000 a year, we don't keep it, you know, you know, add to it every year, we just...
Oh, so there isn't, there, we're not...
Well, you don't add to it.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're just appropriating it, but we don't actually put it?
Well, we don't use, does not appear it over.
We're not putting it in a fund, okay, so we're not putting it in a fund, okay.
Well, then, it proves that...
And with that 3% cap now, I don't know what we should do.
Oh, I'm just, I have apprehensions about asphalt, because that Langley's Road, if we had to do an overlay on it at some point, would be very expensive, and even to mill out the old asphalt, if we wanted to turn it to gravel again, which would probably be a riot, but would be expen... And no matter what you do, short of tarring, it's gonna be expensive, so, we should probably look at, or at least, kind of, including that, maybe in some over, I don't know, I'm just, you get what I'm trying to say here, it's like, one of these years, we're gonna have a project out there, and we're gonna have to cough up $50,000 or something, and that would be...
That's gotta be, what, a half a mile, or at least go in there.
It's a ways, I mean, it's, it's a long piece of asphalt, and I mean, it's in good shape, cause it just got done not long ago, but 10, 15, 20 years, something's gonna have to happen again at some point, an overlay, or a major chip seal, or something, so...
If I quit, chip seal would be good.
Something to consider, I mean, just, just thinking about it in the long run, um, anyway.
So what should we put in?
Well, I would say...
I don't know if you have...
Well, you're, you better leave what, you know, like, Martha's been doing for sure, $15,000.
With that 3% cap, I don't know, if we put $50,000 in there, maybe it's that 3%, it's done.
It's done.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, we should almost be having it as a part of a fund, or earmarking it as a part of a fund, or with, or, I guess it's part of a broader discussion, we can probably have it as a counties. We need to probably start looking at some kind of a fund that's building up for specific road projects, that ones are, like, especially asphalt, cause it's expensive, we have a few areas that aren't really cost, we're not gonna get a lot of cost share on some of them projects, they're not specific roads, so we're probably, and Langley's Bay is...
You don't think we would?
I, well, I'm just saying, like, Langley's Bay is one that's tough, if they cut funding for game and fish and Corps of Engineers, and we have to do an overlay, are we gonna say we're not doing anything, because they won't help us, and we're gonna just, it's our responsibility, we're just fortunate enough, we get cost shares from other entities, but, especially with the 3% cap going forward, we need to probably be a little more cognizant of trying to just, having some kind of flexibility to be able to do some of these asphalt projects, cause they're so expensive, so, that's just... I don't know if we have to change anything right now, but it's part of a broader discussion.
And then there's $18,000 in there for distribution. What we did last year is we gave, if you're looking back at the minutes, we gave...
Yeah, I read that.
$3,000 to Lytton, Hazleton, Braddock, Cave, Kintyre, and $1,500 to each of the Strasburgs, and normally, you let people talk, um, there's people here representing the cities, if they wanna talk, you know.
Yeah. Is there anybody that wants to speak?
Nope, no, no.
Nope.
Well, that, that would sure help out, I guess, huh, that them loans.
Well, you wanna keep the distribution the same, then?
Well, I don't know.
I don't know. What do you guys think?
I think that's, kind of, the idea of the whole deal, is just to help. If I remember, another commissioner saying to keep the lights on, in these places, is what that distribution's for, it's not really...
About probably three years ago, is where we, kind of, went to more of an equitable distribution, rather than, I mean, we were probably a little bit unbalanced for a while. Just, you know, and so we, kind of, split it up, so...
Evened it out.
Basically, almost every little entity's getting about $1,500 bucks, and just some of these bigger parks have two entities, but that was about the most equitable way to do it, and like you said, it wasn't really meant to do a lot, other than hopefully keep the grass cut, keep the lights on, keep the water built, whatever, whatever bills they had, just, and it seems like that's been working well, I mean, judging by, you know, everybody not even wanting to speak, I would assume that it's just, it's fair, it's maybe not ideal for everybody, but it's at least fair. I think, as, as a county goes, I'd like to always reiterate that having some good, clean parks in the county's a good thing for all of us, so, I think it's a good, I think it's good to do a small distribution, like we've been doing.
Okay, can we have a motion to, that effect, then?
I'll, I'll make the motion to allocate $3,000 to the Lytton City Park. So it's $3,000 each, basically, right? I'm just gonna reread Don's motion from last year, I guess, basically, so, allocate $3,000 to the Lytton City Park, the Hazleton City Park, Braddock City Park, Egg City Park, and to the Park of Kintyre, and to allocate $1,500 to the Strasburg City Park, and $1,500 to the Strasburg Park Expansion. That's my motion.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. That'd be the end of the park, so, yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Sure, we can do that.
They're saying, I'll second.
Kerry, Vandemore, second.
Well, thanks for coming in, guys.
You wanna do some more miscellaneous till 9:30, or have you got your people here, whether it be here, on this public hearings? We got 10 minutes.
Oh, I think you gotta wait on the public hearing.
Uh, Chairman Terry, could I take a moment to introduce one of your deputies?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
A few minutes here to go. Why not have a chair here, Joseph? Joseph came out with his, Joseph James, uh, came out with his May first, so it's first week, he'll spend the next month, kind of an FTO program with us, he won't be doing any enforcement, uh, we're gonna cut him, for a minimum, four to five weeks, a minimum, and then we'll reassess that there, but I'll let you, uh, have him introduce yourself to them, and then if you could, when he's done, if you could each introduce yourselves, so we kinda got an idea of who you are.
Go ahead. Name's Joseph James, I've been, uh, previous seven and a half years active duty law enforcement for the Air Force.
Excuse me, pull that mic up, please.
Is that good?
It's pretty good, yeah.
Name's Joseph James, I was previously seven and a half years active duty in Air Force law enforcement, my first base was my Air Force base, and then I recently separated from Andrews, which is just south of Washington, D.C., in Maryland. So, law enforcement's kind of all I know, that's all I've been doing my whole life since I was a child, and I'm pretty excited, really, for this kind of, um, you have questions for me at all, or?
We're glad you're here.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Do you have one, introduce yourself, guys?
Joe Hanson, State District.
Aaron Maygram, County Commissioner.
Jim Vandemore, County Commissioner. Dan Mittery, County Commissioner.
Craig Miller, County Commissioner.
James Gardner, County Commissioner.
Uh, Joseph is currently staying up at the Woolbar Farm, Braddock area, kind of a shirt-tow relative, adopted, kind of relative, anyway, while he was stationed in the Mayador Forest Base, he met a lot of people from North Dakota, and some good friends, and so forth, that's kind of the connection there, so, wanted to come back to the area where he was discharged from the service.
Woolbar, which is Kenny's place.
You have the Kenny account.
Oh, good.
Kenny can keep you in mind, so...
Oh, yeah. Still keep you one before.
Kenny, Kenny knows. Kenny's a good egg.
All good.
Good, well, welcome aboard.
Yeah, well...
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
You're welcome, guys, though.
Well, if you want, we can go over a few more of these miscellaneous, it's till 9:30, how's that?
Good.
Let's go on to item 5, plot of irregular description, Track 1, in the southeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section 24, Township 133, Range 78, at the Fifth Prime Meridian.
This is just south of Weber's Farm.
Which Weber?
Dan.
Oh, well, south?
Yeah, a couple miles south. So there's the Weber Farm up here, but they're plating out four acres here.
So another home? Probably, yeah. Say yes.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a motion to accept the plat?
I'll make that motion.
Gardner makes a motion to accept it, second.
Sorry.
Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 6, building permit for VV Farms, Inc., to construct a grain bin on the northwest quarter of Section 20, Township 129, Range 76.
Yeah, it was...
Lewis is here?
Yep.
Okay.
Just put another grain bin near the other ones, so...
Is that a section line going north and south, then?
Nope, this is a corner line, this is the section line here, so...
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Dr. Maygram, second, by Vandemore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, 7, building permit for Ron Vandemore to construct a 52-by-48 residence with a 50-by-50 attached garage, on the northwest quarter of Section 17, Township 129, Range 76. Rollin' worse place.
Rollin', the old Rollin' Northwest.
Rollin' Northwest, yeah.
Yeah, he's building in the old yard there.
Yeah, so he did that yard up.
I did?
Yep. Everything's good there, that I see.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Gardner to approve, item, what was it, 6?
7.
7.
7. Second?
Second.
Yeah, second by Vandemore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 8, building permit for Dennis Benz to move a 50-by-24 home on the, on the 14-acre square, in the southeast corner, the southeast quarter of Section 5, Township 136, Range 76. That's north of it. That's what.
It's just right burly.
Yep.
It's right on the edge, it's like the last road we've been skipping.
Dennis, oh, yeah. Where's that at? Is that to the east, 83?
Yeah.
Yeah, here's 83, right here.
Almost right on the county line.
About a mile south, and you have east there.
Yeah.
They're going...
That's the place that always floods out, doesn't it? Right? Gary Benz is from, or brother, married, married...
Yeah, I know Dennis's place has been at risk a couple times over the years, but assuming that spot's not gonna be, that's probably why they're...
A little higher.
I would assume, but...
That's a problem.
Yeah.
Right on that creek, yep. Yeah, I think it's from one of his sons, and they're gonna deep this quarter over later, but Dennis did a building permit, so, cause it's in his name, but, yeah, he's plenty far off.
He's plenty far.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there a motion to accept it? So...
Make a motion to accept.
Miller makes a motion to accept. The building permit for Dennis Benz, is there a second to it? Matt Vandemore, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 9, building permit for Ronald Jagula to add a 42-by-20 addition to the existing cabin, on the southwest quarter, the southeast quarter, the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter, of Section 8, Township 130, Range 79.
We got 210, fast, 230, so...
You did that pretty good, dude.
Yeah, you got it broke down pretty good, I'm glad.
Can you guys repeat that with clarity?
All right, so the orange square is the existing house, he's extending it 20 feet to the south, and how it reads in there is 40 feet from the frillage, so his property line is right where this black line is, and that would be considered a frillage, we didn't add any other easements or anything, so, I went out and measured, he started some groundwork, and he told me it'd be 43 feet, and I got 42 and a half feet, so, he's just past the 40 feet.
Yeah.
So...
You okay with it?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept, item number 9, on the Ronald Jagula permit?
I'll make a motion.
Gardner makes a motion to accept it, second by Maygram, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We got a few minutes. Number 10, building permit for John Zucker to erect a 60-by-40 building, for storage use on Lot 3 of Track B, west half of the southwest quarter of Section 9, Township 130, Range 79. That's west of town, I remember, right?
That's just east of there, it's by Cat Town, too.
It's on the other side of the, right?
Yeah, so...
All good.
Yeah, that's that, we're good.
They're there, so... Um, no issues here, he's beyond that 40, he's gonna be 50 plus, towards the center of his locker, so...
All good.
Yep.
Is there a motion to accept that item, or permit? Motion, Mr. Vandemore makes a motion.
Second.
Second by Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Did Maygram second that?
Gardner beat me.
Gardner seconded.
He is smiling, he knows he beat me, so he can have it, he can have it.
Do it, go.
You win that one, you win that one.
We'll arm wrestle about it later.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
We'll do one more, let's do item number 11. You just got the two of web, item number eleven, build be permitted for the T-Mobile to swap out three parts, so, three panels, excuse me, on the existing tower located on seventy-seven ninety-seven, highway eighteen oh four southwest, Linton, North Dakota. I would think that's, where's that at?
That's out there by, um, Burkhart's.
Mark Burkhart's.
Okay. They're just.
No construction or nothing, they're just.
Just replacing panels away on the tower itself.
I motion they approve.
Maygram makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Gartner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carried. You wanna do number twelve yet?
Yep.
Number twelve is a building permit for Justin Burghad to move a sixty by twenty-eight man- manufactured home on lot forty-three in tract A, section twenty-seven, township one thirty-two, range seventy-nine. Justin Burghad, is that out by Cat Town Bay?
Uh, Glen Coe, or not Glen Coe, um, Glenwood Acres, so just south of Beaver Bay, so by, um.
Yeah, Glenwood Acres is down.
Yeah, by Doctor's.
Timber, yeah, that's good.
That's, yeah, down there way in the bottom.
That's Jack's kid. Oh.
But yeah, there's a few lots down that Glenwood Acres area down there, so.
Yeah, that's, um, Tim's.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to.
But, um, hold on a second.
Okay, go ahead.
So, he just brought it in, um, I don't have a good drawing of it, but he's gonna have the setbacks right, problem is, it's a three-quarter of an acre, so he is contacting Western Plains, uh, Land Up Schmidt, they're gonna come out and check the septic and make sure they have room for a drain field, so. We can do like we did in the past where we pass the contingent on the approval of that.
Yeah.
I'll be good with that, so.
Alright, I'll do, I'll make a motion to approve it the way he said, the way you just stated.
Contingent on the, on the septic system.
On the inspection correct.
Yeah, cause they're gonna do it themselves, Burghad, so then she needs to come down and make sure their layout to the septic is gonna be right and.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
I'm slow today, I guess, I can't get a second and see this.
Aye.
I oppose.
You didn't wanna get a coffee, you're. Well, just, I, just to clarify, just, you know, since I, I do septics, you can, you can fit a septic system on less than an acre, the big issue is always a well, which most of these places have real water, so it, it. It's, it's not easy, but it, it's still doable, but the, the acre thing is with a well and a septic, it's almost impossible to match all the setbacks, so more than likely, they'll probably figure out a scenario, so it's, it's probably okay.
They didn't usually figure it out on land that goes down.
And a lot of these lots were subdivided under an acre a while ago before we were getting a lot pickier about it, so it's, it, it'll probably find.
Just so that it's clarified again.
Right, I just know that, that the one acre rule is, a well is a big part of it, most of these places don't have a well, so.
Okay. Okay, the next item is, uh, on the new business is item B. Is a public hearing to consider the petition to close the section line from the northwest corner of the northwest quarter of section twenty-seven, township one thirty-one, range seventy-four, and running east on the three-quarter, three-quarter of a mile, the portion of the section line to be closed is approximately three-quarter of a mile. Who's here to represent that? Mr. Baker, you wanna step up?
Can I come along?
Yep.
Morning.
Morning.
Okay, we're here to, uh, I had some lands arrayed on the west side of the section line, and Doug owns the land on the east side of the section line, and that, uh, the road hasn't been driven since late nineties, early eighties. And, uh, I took the fence down, and I wanna put a new fence up, and Doug wanted to put a fence up, and, uh, so we, we're here to see if we can, if you guys will approve to close that section line down. There's a creek to the north of it, and it's, it's not drivable anymore, the whole section line is pretty well shot.
Washed out.
Washed out where the beaver creek goes through. So, I, I don't know, I took a picture, Josh, didn't I, about that creek, can you bring that up, or?
Give me a picture.
Where are you, I showed you.
I showed you, I don't. Yeah, I don't, I don't have that on my computer.
You wiped it off.
I don't have that picture on my computer, but, uh.
Yeah.
Nobody's driven it for forty, fifty years.
Did there used to be a culvert through there, or?
No, no, there was no culvert, nothing, it's, the beaver creek runs from Doug's land over across mine.
But it was passable one time.
At one time.
At one time it was.
Early nineties.
There's a rock down there.
Yep.
Did the rock wash out, you can't, is that what?
No. Larry Fisher, he used to live out there, and he hauled rocks, I don't know how many rocks he hauled down there, and in time, nobody used it, nobody kept it up, and it's, it's just all washed out.
It's pretty steep going down in there.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, you can't, you can't haul them green or nothing out of there.
It's got another way, another route, you don't need to use it.
They don't need, nobody needs, uh, with that bigger equipment nowadays, nobody can travel that.
No.
I don't know if I got a picture of it on my phone yet, I just.
So, was it, is it crop land on both sides?
No, it's, it's pasture on one side.
On one side.
And pasture.
Oh.
And a little crop, uh, no, there's no crop land, it's pasture on both sides.
So, if you guys were gonna put a fence in, you'd just. One fence?
Well, I just put one fence, put electric wire on one side, and four, four barbed wires I, I plan on putting on the other side, so.
So, your intent is to go right down the center of the section?
Right down the center of the section line. There it is.
So, which one of you owns that north long quarter of twenty-eight? The field? No, on, on twenty-eight there, isn't that broken to the long, yeah, who owns?
That.
I'm sure.
Section twenty-eight to the north.
So, you own that pie piece or whatever on that?
Yes, yes.
Do you have a fence that's set to the north of this existing deal in section twenty-eight?
Yeah, there's a fence.
That hinders movement of people traveling?
No, nobody travels it.
You can't travel it.
You can't travel it.
You can't get through it.
It's impossible. Can't get through it fully.
Well, I had someone that called me that they travel it with hayne equipment, and there's a fence that they can't travel in the center of the section line with the hayne equipment or moving hay out, and they have to go in on the next guy's portion of the right of way. I don't know if there's merit to it or not. Is your fence whoever it is on the east side, is it setting in?
It was setting in, but.
Thirty-three feet?
We had, no, I don't think that was ever measured out when that fence was put up there originally, but that fence, it, we had, I fenced it off for the last twenty-five years, so the cattle can graze it out, and nobody ever complained that they wanted to drive through there, or, so it's, it's just been, it, it hasn't been used for, like I said, for. Larry Fisher moved to town in the early eighties, and since then, it hasn't been driven.
You said somebody traveled, hauls hay through there?
Is there what?
You said somebody hauls hay through there?
Well, I just had someone call me about that they travel it with hay equipment, and there's a fence that hinders them from driving on the center of the section line, that they're pushed elsewhere, I don't know, I didn't drive it, I'm just speaking secondhand talk.
Okay, yeah, that was, nobody driving through there?
I would say that was made up because, because nobody driving through there, it's been fenced off for a long time. So, we're just asking for, we close that down, put up a fence where it belongs, because it was surveyed, we know where the pins are, and.
Where was you, did you tore a fence out of there?
Yeah, there was, there was a fence going from the south part there where the yellow lines.
Where that Y is that, right?
Yep.
Right there, yep.
And it was setting where, thirty-three feet down?
Well, roughly.
Roughly, but this probably wasn't surveyed.
It wasn't surveyed at that time, it only, I bought that little corner piece from Ida's share, and, uh, she had it surveyed within the last five years, and that's why I'd like to set the fence up now.
Well, it's open for discussion, if any guy, you wanna.
Anybody got any questions, or?
Does anybody travel on that quarter mile to the east?
No.
On twenty-seven on that north side? Cause you wanna go three-quarters of a mile between, so between twenty-eight and twenty-seven, there's three-quarters of a mile, cause I'm assuming, cause you, well, Doug, you own the whole south half of twenty-two. And then Terry owns the one sixty, and then a forty there, and then Francis Chrome owns that last like quarter mile up there, and that, does that, does that get used at all? That quarter mile? I do. Okay. Cause I mean, that's where, I mean, my issue would be is wanting to. Well, we're not closing that quarter mile. Right, but if you close the other three-quarters of a mile, then that, I mean, if that quarter mile is usable, I mean, then the other three-quarters of a mile theoretically could get used, or at least further on that way, so.
Covering in the other.
That's where, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, just because you own both sides of the road, the, I mean, the, the purpose of closing the section line is so it's inaccessible, not to make it inaccessible, does that make sense? Like, just because two, two parties on each side of the road, and they wanna close it, if it's getting used for public access, or it even can be, then really, you know.
Okay, I've got the picture here on my phone of where the road is, you wanna see it?
Well, that's fine, I, you know, cause I'm just, cause like right there, that's that, that quarter mile north of Francis's going to the west.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Going to the west, okay.
Sure. But we can't go any farther, cause I'm sure Google just fall to gravel road there, right?
Right.
Well, those fences aren't back thirty-three feet, are they?
No, there's only a fence on the, on the north side of that. Nobody drives that either, except for hunters.
I drive down that quarter mile, and that's where we haul our grain out, cause that's the only place I can get out.
Okay.
I suppose hunters drive that first quarter mile, cause that's all plots land right there, but.
Right.
And then turn around.
They usually park right back up, the corner is very busy than you want. But I usually have a gate close there, cause we graze it in the fall.
Oh.
Try and get across it, you know.
You guys wanna see the road?
Who cares, you wanna get?
Well, maybe, can Josh, can you?
Yeah, should.
Can you like, quit, email it, you can bring it up on the screen, so that our passwords are known.
Is there several pictures, or just this one?
There should be three of them.
If you go back.
It's the worst one. This part of the road or the creek and.
So, those three?
Those three.
Okay, I'm gonna go back and select them.
That's US game and fish.
I'll do all four of those.
Plots.
Is Plots federal, or is that state?
That's state.
Plots is state, right, that's game and fish.
Or is that, is Plots federal or state?
State, I think it's state.
Is it state?
Yeah, game and fish.
Plots is part of CRP, correct?
No.
No.
Isn't it?
Plots is public land opening, open to sports.
To the general public to hunt?
Well, right, and it has a few regulations, like our staters can't hunt it the first week of season, and, um, yeah.
Okay. So, if that's Plots, the section line, how is that, how's the, how does that work with, do you know, Joe? If that's Plots, they can hunt all the way up to the center of the section line, can they not? Technically?
Yep.
I think so.
But then they, they stop, the request stops right before this parcel.
Right, that Plots is probably only on that quarter.
Yeah, so it is right here.
Okay.
Stopped there. And they're requesting from here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's the road going north and south.
Pretty tough going, huh?
Pretty tough.
Wish probably one time. No.
That's on the road going between you and Ida's old piece, though, going north and south?
No, between Doug and mine.
There you go, that's the one down there.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Coming from the south.
Right, but that's the, like, the old Ida piece that Terry.
Yep.
Right, right.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And you can see nobody's traveled up there.
No, no, it's, yeah, it never was taken care of in the morning.
No, it wasn't taken care of, Larry Fisher was the only one that took care of it, and he hauled rocks down there, I remember as a kid, and he had a quarter of land over to the east on the other side of the road, and that's what he usually took, but.
He crossed there to get.
Forty, fifty feet of, forty, fifty feet of drills nowadays, you don't drive.
No. Wouldn't be much like.
So, so they used to cross there to get through the corner there, and then they would go east there to get to their field, or that was their purpose of crossing it. Well, now I own that field, so there's, and, and his brother never ever crossed it either anymore.
No, no.
But I mean, that east-west one, I mean, if it's being farmed, it's mostly travelable, I would think, like, that's the.
It's travelable, even though you're farming.
Right.
You're farming right through the section line, you're saying.
Yeah. Yes, I broke, I, I cleaned it up, there was rocks, holes, dips, whatever, last year when I, when I bought Elvin's there, I, I cleaned it up, and I leveled it.
Right. But anybody can travel through it the way it is, it's today.
Yeah.
A section line, we can't, you know, you and I and Frank P. and Leo can't do a thing about it, if they drive through your crop land.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, but in the, in the fall, I'm always grazing that, so I always posted it up, there's never nobody traveling.
But they're probably not traveling it because you're fencing it off, though.
Oh, really, get there.
There's a gate there.
Well, I get that, but I'm just saying, most people, when they see even a gate, they're just like, ah, I'm not gonna take that road, that's what I'm, I'm kinda. Well, they're gonna, they're gonna drive in a quarter mile, they're gonna turn around and drive right back down, there's nowhere to go. Well, there's nowhere to go, cause you're farming through it with a gate across it, though, that's my point, I'm trying to say, and like. They need the gate open, I guess, but when you drive down there, you're gonna, there's nothing there, they're gonna turn around.
Is there a gate on the west end of it?
No.
Cause that road goes north, correct?
There's nowhere to go, when you get down there, there's nowhere to go, that's nowhere to go. Where you gonna go?
You're up there again, it's on the other side of that creek that we showed, and, uh, you can't cross it, you're gonna turn around.
Right, that's coming south, but you can go north from that corner.
No.
No.
You're not across the creek.
Can't get across there either.
You can't, can't go north.
There's no section line there.
There's no section line there.
There's nothing there, there's never been a section line there.
Okay. But it's an established section line?
No.
No. No, it's, there's not a trail, but, I mean, there is a section line, it's not a trail, it's a difference, I mean, that is a section, I mean.
So, if you go a little further north there in a mile, sir, right there, which is south, right there, the section line basically ends, that's it, that's where you can drive. So, you cannot travel anywhere in the middle there, there's, there's nothing there. So, theoretically, so theoretically, if they come in, they're gonna drive across the hill, there's nowhere to go, they're gonna turn around, they're gonna.
They're gonna go back, you know.
And I'm sure they've done that plenty of times, but nobody drives in there.
Yeah. People riding around are hunting a way out of there.
Yeah, but when the fire department needs to get there, and that section line isn't there, you're gonna be hating that idea too, when you have a big fire.
That's how the fire was gonna get started, because the grass was usually this tall, you know, and if you get somebody driving through there, that's where your party's gonna get started in the fall.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not inclined to close that east and west, in my opinion, whether it's travelable or not, but the other one is definitely up for debate with the fact that you can't get through it, but closing it.
Anybody else?
You make a small.
Miller?
The short one, north and south, I could see where that could be closed, but the east and west would not be against that.
Okay, the east and west one, if you don't close that down, and Doug wants to farm through it, just to keep the mess and the weeds cleaned up, I'm sure he'll agree to, if somebody has to go in there, the fire department, or, I'm sure they can still drive forward, right? I'm sure he'll agree to, if somebody has to go in there, the fire department, or, I'm sure they can still drive over it, right?
Yes, so years ago, the, from the, the north-south one there going east, that quarter mile. When I bought that, I broke the section line, I cleaned it up, and I told Elvin he could drive across it anytime he wants. Like, he can't get across the bridge, but yeah, if somebody wants to drive through, that's, that's where right there.
I know I've been contacted by hunters who can't get across section lines because they're getting broke up and. To get to their own land that they own, from a certain direction, and, uh. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not inclined to close a perfectly good section line, whether it leads to heaven or nowhere. I mean, if it's impassable, that's a different story, absolutely, I mean, and even, even closing it, we could, we could always put a road closed sign on it and leave the, and you can fence the damn thing and.
And I could put a, I, I could put a gate there too, and if somebody asks.
Well, and, we can just put a sign up that says it's impassable, we don't necessarily have to close it, but just so people know, you can go here, but you're gonna be turning around and coming right back.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I think a couple things, one is that the, the public access doesn't have to guarantee that you can go through it. And obviously, this is probably a different situation, cause no one's coming from the north on that one, right, they got, you're not gonna come from the north, so.
No.
Coming from the south seems extremely unlikely, but like a perfect example is there's a section line north of my house that had a bridge on it from the WPA days, that bridge was dangerous. Nick Lawler and them guys went and knocked it out ten years ago, which was the right thing to do, cause we didn't want people driving over it. There's road closed signs on both sides of it, but the section line is still open, it's just you can't go through it, you'd have to go on one end or the other, cause there's a hundred foot. Oh, you know, trail through there, but the section line's still open, the people that need it are using it, and so even though it's not passable all the way through, you know, close it, you know, so that's where.
If you put a sign up there on the south side.
Right.
That would keep you guys safe, if somebody wanna drive through there and try and drive through that creek area and have an accident.
Well, even on both sides, north and.
North and south.
North and south.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, I'm not necessarily inclined to close it, but I'm definitely inclined to put something up there to keep people from going on it.
Yeah.
Because if you go there in the dark, screwing around to go parking.
Exactly.
Chances are you're gonna be in the drink, you know?
Well, there's somebody's gonna, there might be a lawsuit because there was some sign up.
Right. I mean, the other thing to remember though is, public access doesn't mean it has to fit a tractor with duals or even a pickup, but the public access could be walking, and so that's where you just. Not saying that you can't close anything, cause obviously you could probably walk and swim the creek, and I get, but the, the, the purpose of closing the section lines is generally, probably more on a danger and liability scenario more than anything. And then obviously to alleviate liabilities to the county, like a culvert, a road crossing or a bridge, like you just get to the point where you're like, it's not feasible to keep it open, the parties wanna close it, it works, but. I mean, just closing section lines that could be traveled, just because guys own it on both sides, it's probably not where the process, maybe it just needs to be evaluated, and I, I feel like that, that east-west stretch. You know, could probably still be traveled, and it really doesn't matter if it leads to nowhere, I mean, that, I mean, that's the truth, it's just, I mean, the other thing about it, just from. Just experience is that these, these parcels may get divided up again, and then now all of a sudden you have this closed section line that you gotta try and open, and so that's where you. Not that it can be reopened, and the process might even be just as easy, but it really shouldn't have to be that way unless there's just a really good reason to close it, other than that it, it just wants to get farmed over and grazed over, that's not. Are you inclined to, are you saying though, you're, you would feel comfortable closing the north-south road because it is a danger and it's washed out? I'm just preaching, cause I've made a decision. I'm just stalling my time here.
I'm just trying to get your, I'm trying to get your thoughts on that.
I get it, I mean, I get, I get why the adjoining landowners wanna close it, and it makes sense, and, and there's very little to no travel. Are we better putting signs up that it's washed out or something of that sort? The only thing about it is, is putting signs up is kinda like a beware of dogs scenario, if you know your dog's gonna bite someone, you don't put a sign up, you get rid of the dog. Right. Like, and so. So you're leaning towards. Well, I'm just saying, there's certain scenarios, like, like, so the section line north of my place is a prime example of one you don't close, just because you can't go through it, cause it gets used by probably four or five different landlords, just. The downside is, is when they wanna haul hay, they either gotta bring it from one side or the other, they can't go through, and I'm sure they'd love it, but we're not gonna spend five hundred thousand dollars on a box culvert to save the section line. But you don't close it, you just, we, we literally barricaded that one, you can't drive around it, we put close road signs right on where this bridge was, and then we even went like fifty feet out, so like, you almost have to drive. Through the barricade to get to it. Again, this is a situation where it might be cleaner to just close that north-south one, cause if the access is little, we don't even wanna inherit the liability, neither does the landowner in that sense. This is a little more of a scenario where you entertain closing it, but I feel like the east-west one looks travelable, it's getting farmed. And I would just, it's hard to close a section line that's travelable, even if it leads to nowhere, because it may someday, and now you have this roadblock of three quarters of a section line that's closed, and. It looks like that east quarter, the farthest east quarter mile that's not gonna get closed is very accessible, so at some point, logic would dictate that someone's gonna wanna keep going on there, and that's their right, it doesn't matter if they have nowhere to go, it's, that's, that's the.
Their right to go.
That's kinda where I'm at, like, I mean, it's, it's probably a crappy answer for the adjoining landowners, and that's fine, but as the guys that oversee this stuff, I feel like that's a section line that should probably still get maintained open, that's. Even if it leads to nowhere, cause I guess they have the right to drive to nowhere too, you know, like, that's the difficulty with that, I mean, I. And I'll only say that because I was warned by, we were joking about it, a constituent and former commissioner, my dad, who said that. We're closing a lot of section lines, and as a citizen, he's even just kinda concerned that we're going from like, closing section lines that have legitimate, like, wow, that really doesn't make sense that it's open, to now all of a sudden. We're kind of just listening to talk about closing section lines, instead of closing one a year, we're closing one a month, and it, it's a concern, and it's probably.
A good concern.
It, it is a good concern, because it's supposed to be public access, it's, it's not even about the intent, it's about that it's there, and so that's why when you close these section lines, it just. It just needs to come in with a lot of forethought and.
It makes sense, huh? It makes sense.
I'm just, I'm not.
It's not evidence anymore.
Yeah, and I, and I, I can tell you, there's tons of section lines out there that are open, with a fence running down the middle of it, they've never been driven, they, they're, you don't wanna drive it. I'm not advocating you close those, because somewhere down the road, if something does change, then yeah, now, now you got the scenario where the section line's closed just because of a certain reason, so that's why I, I, I think these are getting. Applied for, and they're maybe not getting their due diligence, and then we, we, we might start getting to a point where we're closing down section lines that are perfectly fine to travel, even if there's no reason to, because. Twenty years ago, there might be, and now you're reevaluating the process, and it just feels like it's kinda redundant, so that's, that's my overall preach, and, and I think the east-west one to me. Without any more proof, and just looking at what I'm looking at, seems highly travelable, and I, I probably wouldn't be in favor of closing that, the north-south one. Is a small tract of land with a big creek to cross, it could present a lot of dangers, there's really not a lot of reason to access it, I would probably make more of an argument that that one's probably.
Because that road, Terry, correct, where that V is right there to the south, that road goes out at an angle, and that's passable.
Yes, yeah, that's a county road, that's county road.
Yep, so if we don't close the section line, can me and Terry just put our fence up against each other, and, you know?
No.
No. You gotta go back thirty-three.
Okay, but you're talking about closing the north and south.
Yeah.
There we could put the fence up.
If we closed it, yes.
Yes, yes.
The idea of closing it is that the commissioners are agreeing to abandon the public right of way.
Then you've got one fence dead center, yeah.
That, that's our, that's our biggest concern, I guess.
Yeah, that was a road that nowhere.
Well, it's a dan- it's a danger, I mean, it is, now that we're aware of it. Right, again, like I said, it's, it's kinda like the beware of dogs thing, at some point, you just, you don't warn people, your dog's gonna bite you, you get rid of the dog that's gonna bite you, so that's kinda where.
Larry Fisher wouldn't.
Where the guy that's tra- uh, came there to your dog, gotta get rid of one of them, right?
Somebody's gotta go, otherwise you're gonna have a problem, so I, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to close the north-south section line. I should have the description to get back to any motion. You wanna what? You wanna make a motion to what, to close the north, uh, northwest or the northwest corner of the northwest quarter of section twenty-seven, township one thirty-one, range seventy-four. And running east from three-quarter of a mile?
Yeah.
That portion of the section line, if it closes approximately three-quarter of a mile.
And I don't know in your motion why we, why we're closing it, because of liability.
Yeah, lighter.
Right, but that's not the, that's not the portion getting tissue, item C would be the one that.
C, the quarter mile. Okay, item C, yeah. Close because it's actually a, a danger for people to even travel it. Jim makes a motion to abandon that quarter mile of road going north-south.
I'd second that motion.
Madam second it.
So to be clear, we're talking, we're talking about.
That quarter mile.
Yep, and it's going south, so basically it touches the county road right away, essentially, that, I mean, that piece there.
It's the section line from the northeast corner of the northeast quarter of section twenty-eight, township one thirty-one, range seventy-four, and running south until it reaches the northeast corner. Of the south half of the north half, section twenty-eight, township one thirty-one, range seventy-four, the portion of the section line is to be closed is approximately a quarter of a mile.
Yes.
So there's a motion and a second. No other discussion, evidently not?
Let's just close just the north and south.
I'd recommend a roll call vote.
You wanna do a roll call vote, Madam?
Aye.
Better worse?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Terry? Aye. Motion carried to close the north-south.
Now that gravel road coming down there, you know, nobody's living down there, Doug owns a farm down there, and the other farm was that Larry Fisher farm, that's, everything's tore down. But that road, it hasn't been bladed at one time yet this year, and last year, I don't think so either. Could they run through it, maybe just say, it's going shut, could they run through it, but at least, if it's twice a year or something, just to keep it a road?
And it's on the section line, correct?
Well, yeah, that's, that, it deviates off there, basically.
Just to the east-south.
I would assume there's probably some write-off recorded for that.
Yeah.
You know, there's just one tract there, because it's, it's growing in already and it's getting dicked up. So, you know, if they run through it just twice a year, would be, would be fine with us, you know, we still travel it. I know it's not a highly traveled road or anything, so, but it, it hasn't been bladed the last two years that I, that I recall.
I'd say longer than that.
It's longer than that. What do you think, Russ?
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem, the, the east-west section there is probably the worst part of it, when it turns to the south, it'll a little bit, it starts to curve south, it gets a little better, from what I remember, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah, we can definitely sue them every time of the year and take care of that for you guys.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be every time you guys come out there, you know, like the farm-to-market road, it's, cause it doesn't get used by, by Doug and me, I guess.
That's a UPS truck.
UPS, it's a short.
Short cut.
So, yeah, other than that, any other discussion? Item B. On the three-quarter mile.
I make a motion to deny it.
Miller makes a motion to deny item B. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Madam makes a second to that motion, we'll do a roll call vote on that also, on item B, Gardner?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Madam, Better worse, excuse me?
Aye.
Item A, and Terry, Aye. Motion carried to deny.
So I got a question there, yeah, then, I mean, we'll leave a gate there no matter what, but I'm, I'm still okay to perform the section line now that I've leveled it, to make it possible, I'm still good to perform it and graze it?
I.
I mean, it's technically an encroachment.
It's encroachment.
I mean, that's the trouble with it, I mean, if you're gonna leave it for public access, then it really should stay thirty-three feet on each side.
Well, there is no.
Right, but I mean, even, even with farming or anything, it's supposed to be basically an established trail, or, or some kind of trail going through there, so.
Okay, so all, basically all the section lines then should be not farmed across?
Legally, yes.
Legally.
Well, what do I do then, I mean?
Huh?
What do I do then, do I keep farming it, cause everybody else is, or a lot of people are?
Everybody are, you're right.
Okay, I mean, and, can I graze it?
Well, isn't there, I'd have to look in there, isn't there something about, cause I mean, even, even like the road right aways, we do a lot of like temporary electric fences on some of that stuff to graze it, so there might be.
You got a fence set?
Yeah, and the whole thing is, all the crop ground.
All around his crop, crop ground, his fence.
So where are you set, Doug, on your fence lines, are you set?
I don't have a fence on, I don't have a fence on the section.
You have a fence down the center of the.
Well, I go across the section line with the gate.
Okay. Well, there is no fence dug down on either side there.
On either side.
Okay, just cropping.
What's that?
Just cropping the whole way across, yeah. And like you said, they're all doing it.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
If they got quarter, quarters, they just farm through it, you know?
But if they drive you through there.
There ain't a thing you can do about it.
Okay, well, I've given Terry permission to drive through or come through my yard, cause he's gotta get down on there to fix his fence, and it's easier for him to drive through my yard.
Do we wanna do it? No, well, there's a beautiful crop stand in there, but technically, say, these two guys are hunting, they wanna drive through that corner bean field.
Well.
And they drive through it, and you happen to come out on the west side, see this, you're gonna be irate, even though by law, they're legally doing what they can do.
Yeah, I had it too last year, I had to drive through somebody's bean field, cause they farmed around the section line, but at least the section line is passable now.
Right.
Well, yeah, yeah, you go.
I mean, I, I told them I'm gonna, I have to do it, and they were good with it, you know, but, which I would be good, you know?
The game commission says when you are deer hunting, if you go off the established trail, you're in trouble, now, being that's a section line but not an established trail, who's right?
Well, so, so what you'd have to do, I think, to get around the game and fish, is if somebody, if somebody plants through a section line, and you hunt land at the end of that section line, or that's how you get to a certain specific land. You'd have to just drive it every day, basically, to kill that, to keep that trail established and kill that crop.
Right.
That's, I mean, that's, in reality, that's what you would have to do, and it's your legal right to do that.
If he catches you the first day, and it's not an established trail, what's it going to be, what's the deal?
If, if it's not during deer season, you can drive down that trail all you want, it's a section line.
It's a section.
If you don't have a deer rifle and a deer tag, and it's open deer season, you're not, it, it doesn't matter where you drive, there's no law that's, you know what I mean? So I think, I think what happens is if you wanna hunt that land, then you're just gonna drive across that guy's crop every day till there's nothing left, and it's an established trail, or continues to be an established trail like it was prior to, there's nothing anybody can do.
He's, he's not gonna be your friend, even though it's just the width of a vehicle.
If somebody needs to get down there, they have the right to go.
Yeah, Doug told me too, he said, if you wanna drive, drive, he said.
Well, and it's not the end of the world, it's not like you're gonna lose your tail by somebody driving down your crop, number one, and number two, it is the law, it's just making it easier for you to be able to just keep going back and forth.
At least it's now passable.
Right.
And the price of the grain right now, you're not losing nothing if someone.
Right, exactly.
Now, I mean, that little.
Mind that you're making a statement.
We think it's, I mean, but it's, it's so small.
Yeah, exactly.
Have an adjustment come out and do an adjustment.
Yeah, but you don't know what next year's gonna bring, and then it's a fight, this year's no big deal, you gotta watch for that stuff, Terry.
That's where people end up losing it, and something happens, I mean, it's not saying you, I, Pete and Frank, but there could be somebody on the other end on a different track somewhere, and he'll, and something will happen, and it won't be good.
So do you guys mind if I bring up another question about a section line or? So do you guys mind if I bring up another question about a section line or, uh, like down by my yard, or is this not a good guy?
I don't know if you read it shit, because it's not on the agenda.
Nope, it's not, but you just brought up a point here earlier about not being safe.
Not being what?
Not being safe, a section line that's not safe, you know, crossing that grid. There's the one where they're building the bridge there, there's a section line there. You looked at it, Dan, and they, between.
Okay, that's what we talked about earlier.
We talked about.
Yeah, I mean, you know, talking about not being safe, that's not safe.
But it depends what safe is for. I drove, I drove that all deer season, all deer season with my pickup. I mean, it's plenty safe for a pickup. What's it not safe for? Like to haul hay or to drive a combine through or haul cattle out of?
One more flood than it's probably gonna be going.
You're talking, just at the beginning, you're talking just at the beginning there, where you start off of, off of the main road and start heading east.
You know, you know how the dirt caves in, is there somebody gonna be driving across there when it caves in?
Well, I mean, the only thing I'll bring up is, I do have a folder in it, because this, this topic comes up, it comes up all the time, previous commissions, everybody, but there is case law, I know Joe and I have kinda looked into it too, that. Like the county's not responsible for the travelability of like a section line. Like if it's dangerous, it's really, because people always bring up, well, if someone goes in there, you know, they're gonna sue the county. Well, county really doesn't have a liability to like, like if a culvert collapses on a section line or anything, our job is to maintain the public access, the quality of it is not really our responsibility.
It is not.
That's the way I read the case law and the different, and that came all the way from the attorney general, that was an attorney general's opinion from like two thousand ten that, that my dad requested when he was county commissioner, because this comes up all the time, and it's. I think when you talk about closing a section line, you can use it as a reasoning, like, hey, this thing's kinda dangerous anyway, let's just try to alleviate the fear and the liability. But that doesn't mean that just because it's a dangerous section line, it has to be closed, or that the county inherits a liability for it. Does that make sense? Like, the access is technically two D. Like, as long as it exists, it's kind of up to you as the public traveler to, it's like, travel on it at your own risk. I mean, so now. There's probably scenarios where if the county goes and does some work on it and makes it dangerous or something, but just naturally existing section lines that could be washed out, or have gullies and ravines and something that could be dangerous, the way I interpreted that attorney general's opinion is. It would probably be extremely difficult to find the county liable, not saying impossible, but, so, just because it's a public right of way does not mean we take on the liability of making sure that it's travelable, so.
So let me ask you this, Aaron. If a, if a landowner on either side of a section line, um, feels like it's could wash out after any flood.
Yeah.
He could also go out to his field or a field, get rocks, dump them on either side as riprap. Is that legal?
Gonna ask for permission to improve the section line from the county.
From the county, they'll approve it, yeah.
You're supposed to ask for permission to improve the section line, and then if that's granted, then.
And from that spot, from what I see, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, that water comes in the north and that's kind of a buffer where it goes through, it kind of a U shape and goes back out, right? And if you got high water, it'll go to the south.
The water travels north.
It what?
The water's traveling.
Travels north.
Yes.
It comes from the east, but it goes west?
Well, it comes from, it goes east under that new bridge you've been putting in.
Yeah.
It goes east through there.
East and then south and then back through and then goes back northeast.
Yep.
Okay, okay, okay. And there's, is there a culvert, I remember, there or not, or is that just kind of an overflow? If the creek gets so high that it overflows, you know, that road and then it lays on that south side.
So the creek used to go on the other side of the section line and come through and go right back out.
Yeah.
Well, whenever they built that up, I suppose, Keith Kiefer used to live there, you know, so they built that up, and now it's, you know, so that little part of the creek is.
Who lived there? Joe Kiefer?
Pete Page.
Okay, I don't know, okay.
Anyway, it, um, so at one time they built that section line up, they, they built that.
So he had a right to get in, in and out of the sea glass.
And it just keeps washing in, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we can't even put a fence there. Jason Kiefer's fence is hanging in the air there already, because it's.
And you did rip rap with rock and you ain't gonna put a fence in, no. It won't work.
No.
You can't polish steel through a wood.
Yeah.
Or wood, it don't work.
Yeah.
Tough dog.
So there's just, you know, it's, it's just been narrow and narrow. You won't be able to fence it anymore between Aaron and Jason.
Yeah.
You won't be able to, you know, put a fence in. Something for you to snip.
Yeah. Well, anyhow, any other discussion, guys?
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
So as of now, the north and south one is closed?
Yeah, yeah.
So we can put up, just a simple fence.
Put up our fence.
Yeah. Right, guys? You can put a fence up on the center, correct you or not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, got it. Thanks for coming in.
Yourself, a wonderful day.
You too. Be careful by the creek. Okay. What else we got here? North Dakota Association of Counties membership discussion, item D.
I guess I've been doing a little thinking on, uh, this last legislative session. And it seems that the Association of Counties is really not working for us now. They, last year, there was this measure four, which was about property tax. Uh, having the state pay for a property tax, and the Association of Counties said that would lose our local control if that had been passed. Doesn't matter if we're for it against, that's what they said. So now I've come to the legislative session, House Bill twelve fifty-eight comes up, which would limit our local control. Well, here now they're for twelve fifty-eight. Now, where do they stand? Are they backing us, the counties, or are they backing the legislature? So, I think, am I right, Aaron, that if that passed, we would lose funding if we didn't comply with? Because twenty-two oh eight did that.
Twenty-two oh eight did that, twelve fifty-eight was the electrical transmission line, which is basically a vengeance bill against townships over.
Right.
East that were fighting the, uh, I forget what that big transmission line's called, that's gonna go from Jamestown to Ellendale roughly, or somewhere, somewhere in that area now.
The AI Center.
Few townships that were kinda fighting that, so that was a little bit of a retribution bill, and twenty-two oh eight is a retribution bill on the same group and also on probably Burley and Emmons counties for the opinions of the Summit Pipeline and. And any other county or township or city that's got an issue with project that the state is deemed worthy, so.
So we do no longer speak, just go along with their agenda.
Well, and, and like Commissioner Miller was talking, twenty-two oh eight was meant to withhold prairie dog funds from anybody that would, uh. Basically, anybody that passes an ordinance that would be more restrictive than the state, which.
Against an energy co, against an energy.
Energy, it's specifically, it was specific to energy projects.
Right, yeah.
Pipelines, coal mines, power transmission, anything, so.
Wind turbines, solar, anything.
Whatever, you name it. If, if the state's giving them a setback that you don't like, and you're trying to be a little more restrictive, they were gonna withhold funds, so.
When measure four was, uh, being advertised, we got emails saying we have to fight to try and keep ma, or keep it from passing. And when the legislative session come out, we didn't get any emails to what was going on. They just kept it in. We got more information from other websites emailed to us unsolicited than it did from Rhode County Association of Counties, and I'm just not happy with them.
Well, is their merit, maybe I'm speaking wrong, but is their merit that they're gonna pull out our insurance also if we even contest anything of the state's beacon or some more development or whatever? Am I wrong?
That was, that was an amendment to ten sixty-eight, I think.
It was a bill.
That was a, it was a different bill.
Yeah.
And there was amendment presented that would basically remove the North Dakota Insurance Reserve from covering a county. Or a city or township that has a more restrictive ordinance than the state, which again is a underhanded way of slipping this kind of stuff in.
Yeah.
And the biggest problem I have with that is, uh, the executive director of the Association of Counties, Aaron Burst, is the one that actually presented the amendment, and.
Right.
And it claims that they worked together with legislators to do it, which to me, uh, it doesn't make any sense at all, like, and, and I'll even go one step further to. The argument that Commissioner Miller and I made when we testified against twenty-two oh eight is that, I mean, really, I, I believe the counties and the townships and the cities wanna comply with state ordinances. Our agreement is that the ordinances aren't good enough, the setbacks aren't good enough, like, what we're asking versus what we might even get from the state, we might not even agree on, but we want different, more, we want some other scenarios, and we're not getting it, like. They're not even accepting our conversation that we're trying to basically make an argument in our room, that they need to evaluate and probably change stuff in their rooms. They're not doing it. They're trying to pass vindictive laws to actually punish us, and in my opinion, the Association of Counties has done very little or nothing to stop it, because.
Right.
I'll go even, I'm sure Commissioner Miller agrees with me, but I think they're more worried about their friendships at the Capitol than they are in their friendships at the courthouse. It's, it's, it's getting, it's getting frustrating, and I think, I think the Association of Counties does a lot of good on a day-to-day basis for counties, I think. But their overall view of local control and this basically attack on county and city and townships owning, they are doing not enough or basically nothing at all, and that message needs to get sent. I don't. The proper way to do it is up for discussion, but I am, I'm frankly, I'm disgusted with them. I, I don't even really like participating with them, just because they, they are, they're, they've seemed to lost their way.
Maybe we need to write them a letter, I mean, from Emmons County, how, how we feel. It shouldn't, and we may not be the only ones. I mean, this is a good topic to bring up, but the sixth county too, probably, to see, um, 'cause I agree with, with both of you, I think they do. Day-to-day, they do good work for us, but, um, they should know that they work for us. Our membership is what, our, our membership is what keeps that.
But we don't join their membership, we form theirs, we form, the counties form the association. And it, it's, it seems like they.
Lost their direction, what they're standing for.
Well, and what you have, just to go a little further on it, is that they, they have a legislative committee, which is made up of county commissioners that just are extremely involved. Maybe dare I say they have the time to do it. Okay, not everybody does. That committee, from what I've seen, seems to be a lot of counties that are in your oil country and other stuff that, that are, you know. I don't wanna make it sound like they're just in favor of projects, because I believe Emmons County's in favor of projects, but.
They're not calling for a penny, like, the counties that are not in oil country.
Well, and I think the other thing too is I think you have some scenarios where there's some self-interest on some of these county commissions in these areas, because there's reasons why they got on the commission, was probably to be allies of those type industries, and. And I'm not against even being allies to industries that bring good to your county, but when it's steamrolling private property rights, and basically, I mean, I mean, any one of you that went up there, doesn't feel like you hit a wall when you're trying to talk about private property rights? I mean, like, everybody's probably had a moment where they've gone there, talked to their local, that like.
Yeah.
It, it seems like it's not even up for discussion, and then to have your Association of Counties, which is supposed to be your group, your group lobbying effort, because we can't all go to the Capitol for eighty days.
Right.
And it seems like they're more inclined to make amendments with those guys to punish us rather than, than to, to die on that hill, which is to be representing the counties, and they always tend to defend it for the greater good. But the greater good seems to be at odds with.
At odds with.
More and more counties and townships every day too. It's not like we're the only ones out there.
No, we're not. Question for this internet guys here. It was brought to the attention yesterday to me. If we're not part of the Association of Counties, these seminars and stuff that they put on, do we still get to attend it, or do you have to pay for it? I'm sure we pay for it, but I'm sure it isn't, and how expensive is it out of pocket, if we even wanna attend it?
I would say I think there's non-membership entry to some of that stuff, if you really wanna go to it, training or seminars and stuff, and. The Association of Counties is not the only people that does, you know, IT and different types of training, you know, there's other avenues for training too, but generally, as a member, you participate in what you're paying membership for, you get discounts, it's easier, and I, again, I don't think the Association of Counties is unsavable. But there's a real disconnect right now, a serious disconnect between those that are lobbying and supposed to be up there defending our interests. And the people down here that are trying, like, again, I'm not gonna sit here and make it sound like every setback we've ever passed and every argument we have is just perfectly right and everyone should listen to us. But we're not wrong in the fact that we're making the discussion that this stuff needs to get reevaluated, and we're not getting that from the Association of Counties. And, and I spoke to Aaron Burst the day we were up at twenty-two oh eight, and the conversation was, was that the counties are under attack. I mean, I mean, even the property tax measure. Like, the part of their passing property tax relief was that they're capping us at three percent, like, love it or hate it, but it seems like it's always was falling on the counties of counties, and then, so I don't know, the association is just. I, I think there needs to be a message sent that they're maybe not, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like they're reflecting the opinions that people around here and this board seems to have when it comes to property rights.
And like I said, I, I either think we, as a board, as a board send something, or the sixth county board, we bring it up and see how everybody else feels about it and send it as a, as a bigger group. Rather than, I mean, our, rather than anything with membership at this point, I think we gotta let them know what, how we feel and, and see if we can have some open discussion with them and figure out, uh, how. They went off the rails a little bit and, you know, and, and let them know that there are other counties, hopefully, I would, I would assume that there are, that feel like we're underrepresented when it comes to the legislative group. And that, that would be my opinion, that would be the best start.
Well, he was invited to come down and he.
That's fine, invited down. Marcy sent the email, no response, right?
He did, so he's listening, sure.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll kinda just go on on what, what Craig had said earlier too, was like, Craig and I were there at twenty-two oh eight, I mean, Aaron Burst was in the room with us, I mean, he knows who we are.
Yeah.
And then twenty-two oh eight, one of the major sponsors was Mike Brannenbergh, because that, that power line over there's in his district, he's for that project, he's fighting those guys in them townships. Twenty-two oh eight lost. Later on, through the appropriations process, they tried amending part of the DOT appropriations to include the language of removing the funding again.
And that's what.
And it got caught by Dustin Gerrelow.
Right.
And the, I, I contacted Craig, I'm like, did you hear, you know, and, and he goes, you know, it's funny, we got all these emails about KillND and that measure four was so bad, and we were all on the contact list. But neither one of us got contacted that, hey, a modest portion, the worst portion of twenty-two oh eight was actually getting brought back to life through an amendment process, and that there, there wasn't like a, hey, just so you know, you might wanna contact your legislators, or you might wanna. You know, and thankfully enough people must have got through and it got killed through the.
Well, and I saw it through Dustin, watchdog.
Right.
Which is kinda sad, maybe we should become a member with him, because we get more information through the watchdog group than we did through the Association of Counties.
Frustration that Commissioner Miller and I both share is like, we're finding out through an internet source.
Yeah.
That is just close to the process and, and we know for a fact, like, there aren't fifty-three counties all battling this stuff, but there's a handful, and we were a part of that, in that room that day. I mean, I know Aaron Burst has my cell phone number, because I've texted him, he's texted me back, and there wasn't just like a, this might affect you, maybe you, I don't have time to look at it or whatever, we'd have been like, cool, thanks for letting us know, like. Just, I feel like when it comes time to actually know some stuff, it almost feels like they're in on it. I'm just gonna say it. Otherwise, why aren't we finding out about it?
I know Miller has said that before a couple times about the association not really sending out any emails, getting any legislative updates, you're finding it all through, like you said, unsolicited, third-party emails from, from other people that follow it. Um, somehow we all got on these lists, but I agree with you, I mean, there's very little information about, I mean, I get more ILG training emails.
Right.
Than I do anything about the legislature in the last eighty days.
Right, yeah.
Well, and just one last food for thought before we move on, but, I mean, don't forget who, uh, pays for the Association of County conventions and all that stuff. It's not our memberships, it's, it's endowments and money from Petroleum Council, Lightning Energy. So, when you start to wonder why we're not hearing about some of this stuff, maybe that might answer the question.
Yeah, that might answer.
Right now, right now, we're buying bolts for our firing squad.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I, I agree with Gartner. I, I think there needs to be some kind of verbalized. disapproval, other than just one angry commissioner contacting Aaron Burst and writes us off like that, and I think if, I think if that was, that information was shared with other counties, there's probably a few others that, and there's probably a lot of them that don't know, 'cause not everybody participates in the legislative process, that when you find out, when a year or two goes down the road and this project comes through, and you find out you can't do nothing about it, and you're like, when did this happen? Well, it happened two years ago, and you, nobody knew, and nobody said nothing, so, I think that's.
Well, he had the opportunity to come down, to conduct his actions, and he didn't do it.
Well, I think a strongly worded letter participated by maybe more than one county might change that too, and I think it's a good process to start, 'cause there's.
What is our next six county meeting?
June eleventh.
June eleventh, that one's a lot, that's in.
Bethesda.
Bethesda, yeah, that one's a haul.
Bethesda?
It's not that.
Oh, boy, that's quite a bit.
It's a haul compared to Ashley and Napoleon.
Oh, it's a deer, yeah.
Well.
Well, that's probably well worth traveling.
Yep.
Because we can see what's happening. It's so obvious, and I got that text from you in the dark, going, wow, what's going on, you know?
Well, it's just, 'cause I found out about it third-hand, and it's just like, man, does anybody even know about this stuff, I mean.
Well, and maybe Aaron was busy today, but at least a response to your email.
Yeah, I can't.
Maybe, a courtesy, I mean, that's, that's an absolute, that's extremely rude to not respond to something, um, particularly prior to an invitation to a meeting that you would, um, I, I just think that's.
Well, they were here to sell their membership of their, of their association.
There were two of them there.
Yep. Speaking.
Yeah.
Right.
For us to join, and pay membership.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else? Points made. Uh, next item is E. Brad Hubert, gaming site authorization for Joseph E. Afford, American Legion Post one twenty-two. Morning, Brad.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, just got our one site out at the river, as in past years we had two, but there was a falling out with, uh, place just east here, so we were just applying for gaming at Cat Tail.
At Cat Tail?
Yep.
This is pull tabs, or is it the electronic game?
Electronic, yeah.
Electronic. Just electronic.
I will make a motion to approve that.
Gardner makes a motion to approve it, is there a second to it?
Second.
Magnum seconds, all in favor of it?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried.
Chairman?
Thank you. Thank you, Brad.
Sorry I had to wait so long.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Jeff, is a zoning ordinance update? Article six, pages fifteen through eighteen, conditional use requirements.
I, I would suggest that we push that maybe, I, I think we should push it, 'cause we got some guests, and I think we should just.
Yeah.
In my opinion, is somebody here, somebody here for the zoning? I would say push it and keep these guys moving.
I just tend to, Tanya and Tilda were running late, I mean, you're ready for her, she will come.
Okay.
I would say, I would say do her.
I'd, I'd, I'm just trying to stay.
Do what?
That, let's do Tanya.
We're pretty close to that.
Tanya?
Yep.
Okay, Tanya, according to Tanya, policy changes.
Dan, the phone's right behind you on the.
Oh, okay.
You wanna bring that, if I am?
Oops, I got my stupid thing.
That's all right.
Get it out of the way.
Who are you doing this to?
Push buttons till somebody answers.
Aaron, how do I look?
You call the fat check, and you order lunch for all of us, that's how you do that thing.
She's gonna be calling you.
She's calling?
She's calling, oh.
She's gonna call my office, and they're gonna transfer it up here.
Okay.
There's a red light by Jody's, and was she trying to call when we were screwing around with the phone?
Like, she just looked at my message here.
Okay.
Gave me a thumbs up, so she'll probably, falling downstairs first.
I thought there was a light blinking here, but I'm.
Is this the twinkling in Dan's eye reflecting?
I think one's blinking like that.
What?
You heard me.
Yeah, I heard you.
And you.
You were mumbling.
I said, was the twinkling in your eye reflecting off the phone?
It's the volume on, yeah.
Yeah.
There you go, it's up.
I think that, uh, so, when you wanna answer, you can just hit the speaker, well, I think she's calling.
She's calling, Jacob.
It seems like it's not coming through. 'Cause the light blinked like it was coming through, then it turns red, so that's why I was wondering. Okay, there it's come.
There she is.
Jody? Oh.
She'll have time.
Tanya?
Hello, yes, it's Tanya.
Hi, Tanya.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, thank you for doing this via phone, I'm sorry we didn't get a Zoom call set up, but honestly, I have just a couple of short things for you, so it should not take us very long.
Okay, it's all yours, Tanya.
Okay, perfect, so, um, in the course of just working with, I don't even remember what I was exactly doing when I discovered these, but I found a couple of policy changes that I highly recommend that you make, and in full disclosure, I have not reviewed your entire policy front to back, but I told Marla, I just wanted to send this email when I discovered these couple changes, and I'll just continue to do that, if that's okay, if I come across something that needs to be addressed, I'll just ask Marla to ask these, and the quick one will take care of it, so, um, one of the things is, um, in, well, two of the three changes that I'm recommending are in relation to the principle of at-will employment. So, in the state of North Dakota, we have at-will employment, that means that the employee or the employer can choose to terminate employment at any time, with or without cause, that's just how we're set up with our labor laws in North Dakota, okay? So, um, if you, if you put something in the policy that indicates otherwise, you know, that maybe cause is needed, or that you can't terminate after a certain date, it cancels that at-will employment clause, and it can get you into trouble liability-wise, you know, um, legality-wise. And I'm no attorney, but I've worked with this issue enough that, um, I know of an employer, um, in my region actually, that ended up giving themselves in a lot of trouble just because of simple little language in their policy manual that sort of cancels that at-will employment clause, so, um, so one of the things is, is in section three point five, um, for introductory period for new employees, in that, in that, um, paragraph, you have during this introductory period, um, that the original sentence is during this introductory period, both the employee and Emmens County have the right to terminate employment without advance notice. I would recommend that you add during this introductory period and throughout the duration of the employment relationship, because that's the truth. You have that right, and so does the employee throughout the entire duration of that employment relationship. That, of course, we, we would request that they give us a two-week notice, right? But you cannot require that necessarily, um, and if in doing so, you could potentially cancel that at-will employment clause. So I would recommend that you add the statement and throughout the duration of the employment relationship.
Okay, okay.
And I did send, I don't know, Marla, but I didn't ask you to, but I don't know if you guys have the, the documents that I sent to her in advance or not, but.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, we do, we do.
You do, okay, good, okay. So then, the next one is being, first of all, I guess, do you have any questions on that, does anybody have questions on that?
Anybody, I don't, I don't know any of the other members, anybody else? No.
You're, you're, go ahead, Tanya.
Okay, so the next one is right in line with that exact same principle, so in three point one six, employment termination in that section, um, at, there's a couple bullet points there, the types of termination that can happen, you know, resignation or retirement, then the termination involuntary employment, and then reduction of force, and then beneath that, there's a paragraph. And at the bottom of that paragraph, again, we have that, a similar statement that says both the employee and Emmens County have the right to terminate employment at will, and then with or without cause, and then I would just state at any point during the employment relationship, instead of what it's referencing is that last policy we just discussed where it says during the introductory period, it's not just during the introductory period, if somebody can be, you know, six months and one day, it doesn't mean that you can't terminate them if you feel the need to do so, right? So, this kind of clause is what can get you in trouble in terms of being able to manage your employees, and obviously, we don't, um, termination is never something we wanna do, and, and we hope that we don't have to do it frequently at all, but you don't wanna kind of box yourselves into a corner either, so, I would recommend adding the statement at any point during the employment relationship, and then taking out the statement during the introductory period for new employees.
Okay, okay. Any discussion on that? Joe? None, no discussion on that, all good.
Okay, perfect, so then the only other one that I have for you is another pretty easy one, it's still in section three point one six. The paragraph starts out saying any employee who terminates employment with Emmens County shall return all files, records, keys, et cetera. Um, and then there's the second sentence of that paragraph states employees may be subject to signing an agreement in advance with the county, which would provide the county, et cetera, et cetera, right? Um, that's a great principle, um, that's a great principle, and there's nothing wrong necessarily with that. The only kicker is that in the state of North Dakota, if you are going to make any deductions from an employee's paycheck, you must receive their authorization at the time of the deduction, their written authorization. So, it would be fine to get them to sign in advance, however, you still have to get their signature at the time that you're making that deduction, according to North Dakota law.
Okay, okay.
So, so I would just, in my opinion, there's just a couple different ways you could reword that, but if you wanna just go simple, you can just take out the words in advance. Right, so it just states employees may be subject to signing an agreement with the county, which would provide the county the right, et cetera, et cetera. So, just taking out the words in advance, it's still in here, so employees should still, if they're reading their policy manual, like we expect them to do, even though it's not exciting reading, I know, but if they're reading their policy manual, they're still going to know that that will be expected of them. So, it's, it's not having them sign it in advance, but at least you're notifying them in advance that they may be subject to signing it at the time of that deduction.
Okay, okay. Any discussion there?
Tanya, it's Aaron Magravir.
Yeah.
I, I think the reason why it's in advance, I don't know if you know this, but it's a requirement of the employees to sign like the back page of the handbook when they get it, right, which is basically an acknowledgement that they've read the handbook.
Sure, yeah.
So, I, I, I think that's probably what the in advance probably means, so, I mean,
Got that.
Not saying there needs to be a change, but that's how Emmens County's got it set up anyway, so basically, all the employees have on file that they've at least read and acknowledged the handbook, and so then you're saying that they still have to sign some kind of acknowledgement at the time of the paycheck deduction, that that, that sheet they signed with their handbook is not an acknowledgement of the deduction of their paycheck, right?
Right, that is not sufficient.
Okay.
Just because the law is very specific that the, the written acknowledgement, the written authorization must happen at the time of the deduction, so it needs to happen when that final paycheck is due, it can't be something that you get done in advance, yeah. And, and you're probably right, this probably is something to do with just signing this handbook, which is great, and I highly recommend you still do that, um, but you're not fully in compliance with labor law if you're not having them sign something again when you make that deduction.
Right, and I, I guess my only comment to that would be that, 'cause obviously, why would you sign anything that says you're gonna deduct your paycheck? But signing the handbook, which states in the handbook that that could happen, kind of acknowledges that you understand that that could happen, right, like, that's kind of like the, the, the little bit of a binder, that's like, hey, you sign the handbook that said that that can happen, so by not signing it, I mean, you still acknowledge that this could happen, and then at least going forward, you, so signing the handbook is still vitally important, even, even if that process does or doesn't happen.
So the handbook, if I have to ask this, Tanya, is there a file of everyone that receives this handbook, commissioners, employees?
When you sign it.
Is there a copy of that?
Yes, in your, in your file.
In your file?
Yeah, that you signed it, yeah.
Okay.
Right, so every employee that has an employee file should have one of those signed, 'cause that's part of your employment, is you have to.
Okay.
Yep.
You don't necessarily have to agree with the handbook, but you have to sign it, get it read it, acknowledge it, that it's there, like, that's, that's.
This is giving you notice?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Any more discussion regards to Tanya? No, Joe? Nothing? Anything else, Tanya?
No, that's all I have, like I said, very simple, just some simple things for you today, so, if I come across anything else, I'll certainly just, you know, do this again, but I just, I know if I just write it on the list, it's gonna get forgotten.
I hear that, yeah, I appreciate you following up, we all do.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay? Thank you, Tanya, we appreciate your time and all.
Absolutely, thank you, you're welcome to rest your day.
Take care of you.
Yep, yep, thanks.
Thanks. Green, oh.
You can have that, yeah, or you can just hang up the phone.
It's cleared up, right?
Yep.
Clear. So you've got the changes.
So I think you should just have a motion to prove
The changes are changed, right?
The employee manual suggested by Tanya.
Is that how we change the handbook?
Yeah, you make the motion.
You make a motion, and then do a roll call on it, that they all accept, right? Is there a motion on the changes that Tanya Wyler, our HR person, brought to our attention, and the changes that she, uh, made note of, and recommended for us to do, is there a motion to accept her recommendations to our handbook?
Is she gonna keep working on it?
Well, the question is now, if we, if we, if we approve these changes, is that handbook, you have to be re-signed by everybody that's got this handbook, because now it's not a valid handbook anymore, it's got changes to it.
Normally what I do is I send out an email.
These are the changes?
To all the employees.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, okay.
Or I'll like, like for the road department, I'll send it out to John and Russ, and they make sure that employees all get a copy of that email.
And we're good with that, Joe, that's legal binding?
I think that's, we've been doing it before, I've only seen issues with it.
Okay.
It's not a very good excuse to do stuff, but. I, I, I don't have any problems with the changes, I, I'm not overly familiar at the moment with the process for sure, that's the only reason why I'm hesitant, like, I, I'd have to like, probably read through that part, 'cause I think it does have a process for modification in the beginning parts of the handbook.
What do you mean?
Isn't there like a little bit of, I thought we had to do something a little different, that's why, so I said, my apprehension is just to make sure that, you know, not that it's like, we're making change, we're making motion, we approve it, it's like, is that the proper way to do it, but I'll pull my handbook out right now, I can't honestly say that, so that's all I mean. It's my only hesitation.
I guess I don't, I don't have the handbook in front of me, I didn't think it was gonna be a, I just.
We got a handbook carried, we'll take a look at it.
Well, I got it in the, in my book, my point is, it's like, I didn't know we were gonna be making a change to the handbook with that item on the agenda, so that's why I would, I would just maybe argue making the changes, or maybe have Joe look into it a little bit, and then, you know, I don't see why I can't wait maybe another month, just, if it's a simple change, we should just make sure not that we're just like,
Jumping into something.
We're just, it's like the section line debate, also, we're just hammered out at one meeting, and it's like, there's, maybe needs to be a little more discussion, I would just, I hear that.
Okay.
Well, Josh has got it up here right now, so.
You wanna table it to next month then, or?
Or do you wanna go through it?
Well, we reserve the right to change.
Says changes will be effective on the dates determined by the Emmens County Commission, and after those dates, all superseded policies will be null.
And it's without notice.
Okay. Well, it's probably the portion I would read, probably put it down and say I'm fine with it till next month, so, I just wanna make sure that we're not, we're following the process that everybody's agreed to, that's the proper way I do it.
Yep. And good idea.
I suspect she's gonna run across the board too.
Well, she's gonna continue to go through the handbook when she's got time to replace it.
Yeah, I, I don't feel like these are huge, shattering changes that are gonna cause a problem, I'm not trying to be like that, I just wanna make sure that we're, that we evaluate changes in the policy, policy, before we actually implement a change. I think if I was an employee, I would expect my commissioners to do that, so.
What do we want, we'll table it till the next meeting, how's that?
That's fine.
Okay.
After reading that, I don't know if I see any trouble.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're covered.
Would you feel comfortable with tabling it, or do you feel like?
I think it's fine.
I mean, according to that, I would make a motion to approve these changes to the handbook.
You know what, I'll second it, since I started the discussion, I think that's.
Are you okay?
I'll second it, I'm fine, after reading that, that's the only portion I try read, it literally says everything I was curious.
And I'm glad you brought it up, and we took a look.
Took a look at it, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's a motion by Mr. Gardner to accept the changes of the handbook that Tanya Wyler brought to our attention and recommended. We looked at it thoroughly, is there a second by Mr. Magravir? You wanna just do a roll call on it, and it's, roll call, partner?
Aye.
No, it, Madam Burris, uh, Magravir?
Aye.
McCary?
Aye.
Motion carried? Motion carried? Uh, twenty forty-eight. Is there anybody here, do you wanna, what do you wanna do? You wanna do the fire discussion? Is there anybody here representing this story or?
Craig and I went to the after action meeting. Uh, it was pretty interesting to listen to them talk about it.
And where was that held?
It was held at the courthouse.
Who conducted it?
Mary.
Mary Singer.
Um, and they just, the, the grassland guys were here, they talked, the one guy talked a lot, or Forest Service. Uh, Hazelton Fire Department talked a lot because they were, it was their fire, kinda they were first on scene. Talked a lot about communication, uh, dual band, eight hundred hertz, issues, i- issues with communication was the biggest angle, what they could've done better, um, it was, it was a,
Important.
Yeah, it was really interesting to listen to. I was, I've never sat through one of those, I mean, in the military, we did after action all the time. But to know that there was another fire going on at the same time in Sheridan County,
Right.
um, where they actually had two firefighters go to the hospital and I think they lost a truck.
Right.
Um, we had no loss of buildings, no loss of equipment, no injuries to any personnel. And we had, what was there for agencies on the ground?
There's.
Eight, ten?
Yeah, there was a lot.
Gary, how many agencies were on the ground for that Glencoe fire? Was it like eight, nine?
I'd have to look at the reports, um.
There's a lot.
There were a lot.
Morton, Burley, Rural.
You had Bismarck, Rural, Mandan came over, Rural, um.
Sterling.
Sterling.
Oh, yeah.
Gableton, Glencoe, Weyman.
I think Braddock was over there.
Was Stroud, Braddock, Forest Service.
Stroud, or no?
No.
Okay. The Forest Service, yeah, the.
Forest Service was there. It's in the report.
National Guard had a Black Hawk.
Yeah. Yeah, we requested.
Just one. Actually wound up being just one, they had to send one to Sheridan County, cause the third one was down.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then, uh, Red Cross. Yeah, there's a list of.
MS County Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, Highway Patrol, Gaming Fishers out there, yep.
MS County Road Department was out there.
Road, yeah, yeah.
Did Russ have to run up there or something? MS County Ammunition was out there.
Yeah, we called the blade up.
Lot of action, I, I know, I.
Well, that was.
It was a big, just shy of sixteen hundred acres, like about.
Tough, like the, tough ground, how do you get in it somewhere for a mile?
That's a close problem.
Yep.
Yeah, we looked at that, access was limited.
Well, you have, you have the report on that now? Yeah, yeah, it's been given to Joe. Okay. Yep, exactly, so. And, uh, I guess it's up in the air as to how much we owe for the Black Hawk helicopter. It could be up to thirty-two thousand. There could be cost sharing on that, but as it is now, we haven't locked up the official bill.
And how did this fire get started, like I asked, was they, were they tired of shooting?
Yeah.
Or was it this explosive device they were shooting?
Well, both, both, yeah, yeah. So that's why I give, the, the report's been given to the state's attorney for his review and consideration. So he's gotta look at that. I don't think an open forum like this is a place to talk about that.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, he's got the report, I guess, and so forth, but, yeah, I did talk to Mary Singer on the Black Hawk issue. It's unknown if there will be a cost, there could be, but it's undetermined at this point, so.
Okay. So everything's been handled?
Yeah, everything's, uh, yeah, excellent. We know who, what, where, when and why. All those answers, or all those questions have been answered.
Okay.
So, yeah. I spoke with Mary yesterday and Russ and I had talked about this earlier, about, uh, training some of the road department to run blades through, to divert fire and so forth, make fire breaks. Fire breaks, yeah. And she said they should be fire department also members. And Russ says we have two on there now. If, if, if you're able to, but sometimes you're not able to. Well, you're not, that's right. Yeah, you know, that's just, yeah, uh, neither that person is not available. Right. You know, that's gonna be the thing. But the thing is with a blade, is a blade makes a nice machine for using a fire break, you're rolling it over. You can disc it three, four times before you get it black enough, before it's not gonna burn. With a blade, you're gonna roll that dirt over and at the end of the day, when it's all done, you can roll it back, you know, kinda.
Well, I think from what we saw with the after action, what really made the difference was some farmers with some discs, right?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I don't, even the Blackhawks had a, had a tough time putting it down, um, or the Black Hawk, I should say. So I, I, I think Craig had a great idea with sending a couple of guys to this training, um.
The Forest Service.
Cause it could be the difference, honestly, between a hundred acres and.
The biggest thing there is it was such, you know, that, that whole area you've got to familiar with, it's, it's not very, uh, inhabitable. It, there's very, you know, little to no roads.
Yeah.
You know, unlike farmland and so forth, it, it's all off trail.
Yeah.
Trucks are getting stuck and everything else, so.
A lot of unknown.
Yeah.
Russ, you feel the same way, sending a couple of guys to this training?
Yeah. Obviously so, yeah.
I mean, even if we'd send more than the two that are on the fire department.
Well, they have to be on the fire department to do it.
They have to be?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just for the liability.
Well, the liability would be underneath the, the county though, to their county employees and so forth. I mean, that's something that can be later discussed.
Yeah, I'd like to look into that more, cause it would be nice to have more than two.
But it'd be awful tough if you have a blade sitting there and they're not a member of the fire department.
He can't run, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Russ is not a member of the fire department, you win.
It's still different than being responding to the first responder, uh, kinda deal, in, in, as a county employee for this type of thing. We've got some coverage for that. That's where that needs to be clarified, but if, that might be the hardest thing, it'd be Saturday afternoon, there's a fire. Who are you gonna find to run that blade, that's on the fire department, you're pretty thin.
That's why we'd be nice to have, well, we, we should check into that for sure, cause I think we could get a few more guys that would wanna go and they could legally or covered by us.
That's something they all could probably do over time, because again, while they're out doing their maintenance throughout the county and there's a fire within three, four miles of where they're working, they're right there and quicker that you can get there and respond, put a fire break up, the better.
Yes.
The biggest thing is, like even with, with every big event, right? What's the first thing that goes to heck? Your communications. That was the biggest problem up there. You got multiple agencies, multiple radio frequencies. Uh, it, it's always, that's the most difficult part, is the communication part of it, but.
Yeah.
It would be nice, yeah, if all the guys had that training over time, because while they're out there working in the county, if there's something nearby through four miles, you can respond in a, in a reasonable time.
But aren't they trying to bring all these radios on state net, but it's such a slow process?
Yeah, slowly, slowly.
It is, it, it, you know, it turned out to be a, a five-year process. Uh, we probably won't be implementing it till twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
You know, some of them in the state have already implemented, Bismarck has, uh, but all the state radio counties won't be for two more years yet.
What was nice about this after action is another thing they talked about is, is having a command post with both radios, so that you could feed.
Right, exactly, and having a, cause this was so big, they had like a, a north section and a south section and a,
so, I mean, this after action was really informative. We've done these, like I said, in the military and it's, it's nice. You could really hash a lot of stuff out and I think everybody that was there now knows how they could do it better.
Yeah.
To combat the, the biggest issue, which was communication.
Well, I thought the fire service brought some good conversation to that after action plan too.
Yep.
And it said like, yeah, at some point when, when you're in the heat of the battle, so the biggest, okay, timeout, let's regroup. We need to rethink this whole thing and, and that might only be five minutes, but, you know, for a while, maybe you have something that's kinda helter skelter. You get guys in every direction for three miles doing different things, nobody knows what the left hand is doing or the right hand, and that's hard and communication's the big part of it, so.
Saves lives, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, that's why we pay taxes into the government entity, right? It's for the greater good. There's no greater good than the fire department, I mean, as far as just volunteers and all that. I think if the county can assist them in any way, I,
Yeah.
I, I think get them all trained or whatever, I mean, whatever Russ thinks is viable for the department, I mean, whatever's reasonable, I,
I'd say.
I think more the merrier that way, like you said, we got guys spread out throughout the county with the right machine to do the job if you need it.
Yeah.
Cut whatever red tape you got through it and get it done, but I mean, somebody called me on a Tuesday, it was like, do you care if, I'd be like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Go.
Well, Russ called, what was that, was that Sunday afternoon when you went out there, or Friday, or Saturday?
Saturday?
I mean, it was, it was a no-brainer, I mean, it was, it was the right call to make, so.
Windy.
Yeah.
Well, you have guys out there with their own personal equipment, probably wrecking some of it, getting awfully close to some of the stuff, I mean, there, there was, uh, talk about one guy's tractor probably got pretty worn. You gotta take it close, this way at least we're using our equipment to do it.
Right, and I think just, yeah, I mean, I, I think it'd be, I think it's the right thing to do on our part to
Absolutely.
do whatever we can to help.
It, it's, it's no different than if you have a flooding situation, some other type of natural disaster, you know, and you've got heavy equipment that's gonna come in and either burn things up, put a dike up or something, it kinda falls in that sap, you know, same caliber. You know, the biggest issue, I think what Mary might be pertaining to is, is liability if someone is burned and so forth, obviously, but, uh, um, again, it's, it's, if you've got guys spread out with the county and somebody is two, three miles away with a blade, but they're yacking out of fire department, it's pretty hard not to take some action.
Yeah, yeah.
We'd be nighting.
You remember when old man Shutey burnt up there by Kent Island?
Oh, yeah.
Remember that, on that fence, remember?
I don't know, all I know is the local fire chief would probably be nighting him on the radio, if that's what it took to get in there, so.
Yeah.
I don't think it'd be a, I think that'd be an introductory process pretty fast, so yeah, I, I, whatever, I, I'm in favor of helping out whichever was, whatever the right process.
But, but as far as the fire, you know, the who, what, where, when and why, we, we, we know all that, uh, and we, yeah, and, and Joe has that report, so.
Okay, all good. Thanks. Okay, thanks, Gary. Next item is, uh, I, Russ, County Road Department Monthly Update.
Um, Mike and John are here from Wolf.
Okay.
They've taken time on their days, so can we jump right in with them?
Sure, absolutely.
Go have dinner, whatever they wanna do, we have another meeting at one o'clock, so.
Okay.
That's what you.
All good with that, I'll do it again. Go ahead, Mike and John. Morning.
Yeah, good morning, uh, commissioners.
Morning.
Senator Russ, have you given them kind of the project at all?
Not that, no.
They are there, but yes.
I don't know if this would help, um, there's a couple copies. So Russ is, uh, just handing out, this is a project, it's kind of been in the works here for a while. Um, it started probably back with Skylar, um, last summer, last fall. Uh, this is Cattle Bay, we, uh, we put together an application, uh, requesting, uh, SRF funds.
A short one, yeah, go ahead, Eric.
I know about it, it's a long one.
Which one is it? Is that the one by Cattle Bay?
Yeah, it's, this is just the two miles into Cattle Bay, the first two miles. Um, so we put in an application requesting special road funding through the DOT, SRF. Um, and this project was selected, uh, they just let us know, it was approximately a month ago, um, that it was selected. And the way the project works is it's, uh, up to three hundred thousand dollars, um, probably reimbursement. Um, but you have to spend, it's a sixty forty split, so you've gotta spend, let's say you have a five hundred thousand dollar project, you would get three hundred thousand, but you would have to spend two hundred thousand to get the full three hundred thousand.
Forty percent.
Yep, forty percent, yeah. Um, I have an estimate of the second page. Um, and obviously it easily meets that, uh, five hundred thousand. And this is to cement stabilize that first two miles, um, only twenty-eight feet wide, right now it's currently forty feet wide, a little bit. Um, and then put two inches of gravel on top of that.
On top of it before the cement stabilizer?
After the cement stabilization.
Okay, okay.
This would be the first time we've really dealt with cement stabilization?
No, they, they did it here, was it last year, year?
It was, uh, two years ago, Skylar, we did it in two locations in the county.
Yep, up in the northeast.
Up in the north by, closer to Kent Island Braddock.
Yep, right, by Randy Wyler and then again by the church.
By the church, yep.
By St. Michael's out there.
We wrote it yesterday.
Leonard Vedder's place, there, in between the church and Leonard Vedder's.
And, and I guess back when we did it after it was done, I think everybody was pretty happy with how it turned out. So that's kinda why Skylar was thinking, um, at the time, this would be a great location for this.
Have you ex- have experience in this, other than these two spots?
Oh, yeah, for sure. I mean, as a company, we've done it multiple places, so.
Lots of positives.
Oh, yeah, all positives, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you're basically just putting cement in the, what's there, so you're obviously gonna harden it up.
Longevity?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's got great longevity, I don't know if I wanna say a timeframe exactly, but it's gonna hold up.
Okay, okay. So how do you narrow that road?
Well, and that's something I haven't really talked with Russ on, um, if the county wants to do that, or?
You know, there, there's a couple of options there, I guess. Um, personally, I'm gonna just say, just from my experience with this kinda stuff, I've looked at that road ten times since this came about here. The, the material that's there out in that area is just, it's not good. I mean, that, that road alone is built over, uh, swamp, over slopes. So, to get to our twenty-eight feet, um, they're recommending pull the shoulders and stuff and bring it in, which makes total sense. The only thing I disagree with is I don't think the material that you'd be bringing in is worth bringing in, in, in my opinion. But I don't have any experience with this as well. So if this cement stuff comes in and takes care of the bad material, it, it can work, but I, I can vouch for that, so. I, personally, if I was gonna do this, I would recommend just going, finding the center line of the road and I'll go down the road with a lift of clay to get your twenty-eight feet, adjust your slopes accordingly and, and build it off that, because
Yep.
the little bit I know, to get out of the muck and out of the whatever, the only way to get away from that is to go up. To continue to go out or in or whatever doesn't really solve any problems as far as what I know. But like I said, I have not experienced it with this, so I'm gonna rely on Mike and John for that information.
So what is pulled in would raise the elevation?
It would, yes, yeah. It would raise the elevation, but again, like I said, usually in areas like that, and I, like I said, I'm far from a engineer and stuff like that, for what I've learned is you would just leave that alone, because it seems like once you open up them sides and them ditches and stuff, it just becomes a, I mean, you battle it for five years, you know? But again, I don't have any experience with the cement side of it.
What are your experience with it?
I mean, we've done this through some much worse conditions and it has turned out amazing, so. That would be our recommendation, the cheapest option, just to pull the slopes up, um, and then cement stabilize that.
So how could you even go down there? You pull it with an excavator, just pulling them up, because it's a swamp there.
It, you know, depending on the time of year we would do it and when we would do it would dictate what we're gonna use for machinery. I mean, from what I've looked at, some of it can be done with a blade, the majority of it, as far as getting your final finish and stuff, you're gonna sink out of sight with a blade. You, you can't ride them shoulders with a blade. Especially once you open it up, maybe right now, but once you open it up, take off that first six inches, it's gonna get ugly, is what I, you know? So I would probably recommend a dozer with a six-way, like a D-six with a six-way dozer on it to do it, which we would have to rent from Butler or something like that. Um, it, it's not that it can't be done, that that's, we can do it and we can get it done, I'm just gonna kinda let these guys give you their information, because they deal with it a lot more, you know, so.
Is there a price in year two for reseating the shoulders then?
There's not, and there's actually not a price in there as well for doing the shoulder pulling.
Okay.
That would be above and beyond this estimate.
Over and above.
Yes. And then the gravel as well, is gonna be over and above.
Well, I've got the gravel, two inches of gravel. It's if you want additional, and we could reduce that just if you wanna barely skirt that five hundred thousand. Um, and then the county could potentially bring in whatever they want.
All this gravel close, if we can use it, whatever.
Just knowing from kinda the conversations before, I think the big thing with the concrete stabilization was, that's, that's kind of designed for poor soil, right? Like that's the idea is to try and fix that.
Yep.
And so that, at least is the intention. I don't disagree with you, Russ, it's a swamp down there, but, but I think that was the idea with going this way, with the second idea being, there's very little to lose, because it's gonna at least create some kind of base to build on, whether we ever did wanna pave it or, or even try and lay on top of it, this concrete stabilization is gonna give you something, like even if it maybe doesn't give you the perfect roadway.
Right.
And so that was, I think, the agreement of like, oh, there really isn't much to lose, other than the cost, obviously, but no matter what, it's still gonna work. Is, is it gonna work? Like, is it gonna be perfect and everybody's gonna be happy? I don't know, but it's prob- it's gonna be, it's more likely gonna be an improvement or a stepping stone to another project, right? That, that was kinda the.
Uh, the only kicker is for paving, if we skinny it up to twenty-eight feet, I don't know if the road could ever be paved at that width.
Right, and that was another question, that, it's too narrow then.
It's too narrow, yeah.
I, I'm gonna be honest, I don't see it getting paved, it's too expensive, I don't know how it's ever gonna be feasible, I.
Unless you get major damage or.
And if that was the case, we'd have got it by now, though, not, I've just, I, And if that was the case, we'd have got it by now, though, not. I've just said, I, it's going to be extremely difficult to pave. It's just a lot of road, unless they would, some major infrastructure like a, like a power plant or so- something that would get built down there that. I don't know, so I, it's tough because just looking at these numbers here. I mean, you're roughly penciling out six hundred and seventy one thousand.
Yep.
You're talking probably an additional hundred?
Hundred.
I mean, if if Russ goes through with two or three guys and we rent the dozer for a month, it's going to take a couple weeks. And then if we add any additional gravel and you start throwing a few extra signs or popping a culvert or two in. You're going to spend three quarters of a million dollars on that, right?
Easy. What would you do? Would you pull all the gravel off that surface and then pull one side up? What would you do? So we could salvage that gravel base or no?
Do we want to?
Or do we want to do it?
That's a, that's a good question and I don't want to sound inexperienced here, but personally, there there again, the gravel quality. And this is no offense to anyone, but the gravel quality that's been there for so long has been intermixed with so many different materials. That the quality, I don't know, I honestly don't know if it's worth salvaging. But I'd have to do some some checking on that, to be honest with you. I, it's it's very sandy. I'll tell you that, it's very, very sandy. If we're going to come back in with some different material over the top as far as gravel, maybe it makes sense to salvage it. But that would be a a very good question and I don't have that answer right now.
Sir, any fabric worked into this too for a base or not?
No. So I I was just out there, um, there is, I feel like a ton of gravel on that road right now.
There is, but there's.
It's got to be, yeah, maybe six inches at least.
There's gravel, good lord, man.
So I would recommend salvaging it and then you prob- probably have a couple options. Uh, we could, after you get graded, built up, we could put maybe a couple inches on top of it. And then we could cement stabilize all of that together. And then after the cement stabilization, put the rest of it on there and then we could go across it with some better, uh, two inches of the gravel like I have included in this estimate. To build it up. That that's just options.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Can the Purdy Dog money be used for this, do you know?
Oh, for sure, yeah.
So do we have the money to cover this?
Would we?
If we, even if it goes all the way to three quarters of a million?
You know, we were short last time we did those two projects, so after we got the money now, there's like eight hundred and some thousand in there. But I think we still have some bills coming for that couch and that old one yet.
Yes. I think it's realm, yes.
So we'd have seven. And we have to.
I can, I can speak for the the little bit of concrete stabilization we did. The Saint Michael's Church has been awesome. I mean, it went from getting calls every March and April to people not being able to get to church. I just drove over with my plumbing band the other day, like, and it's dry, but I don't think it would matter. It's hard, it's solid, there's no. That's a very small patch though versus the cattail road. But and as far as Randy Weigle, every time I've ever talked to him, he's been nothing but happy with it. That was a. It doesn't get the traffic, but that was a similar road where it's literally built through a swamp.
Yep, it is very similar to that area.
But it it doesn't get a hundred and fifty loads a week for two, three weeks. You know, I mean, so it it even comparing that one's unfair, but it.
Did we use it? Everybody else would have too.
I don't believe so.
Just them two spots from my understanding.
Yeah, but the two spots we did from everything I've ever heard, it's, it was, it was, everybody that drives on it thinks it's great, so. But those are, this is a pretty big project compared to them, so it's where.
It's a lot of money, but you hate to flush a three hundred thousand dollar grant down the tubes too. Because this is a problem that continues to come up.
Cattail, Tons, and we looked at them roads that we talked about last fall to the south.
Yep.
There's water on both sides.
Yeah.
Did you drive it?
No, we didn't.
There's water on both sides and you go from where the cattail road goes in to the south, right, I think it's north of the bridge. To the south by Lawford, am I right?
Yeah.
Where the section line goes straight west, where they initially did a feasibility study on a bridge, blah, blah, blah. To go straight into the mailboxes, solid swamp. I mean, all you're doing is creating more roads with more.
Would this project start this year?
Well, and that's kind of the, Russ, your guys' schedule. Um, if he wants to build it, we could, um, he could build it, it'd build this this year. And we could bid this project out this fall or winter and they could construct it next year.
The only reason I say that is the traffic's going to be substantially lower on this road because the campground is closed. And, uh, I don't think you're going to be able to dock a lot of boats. I mean, you're still going to plenty of people have cabins down there.
Locals, yep.
But this year would be a good year, I mean, to start on that project, your your traffic's going to be down.
And you could detour it to the north, right?
Yes. You have a legitimate detour, which is nice too, I mean. Probably needs a little bit of work if you're going to make it a heavy detour, but still.
Yeah, that road would work to to get everybody in an outfit. Like I said, that's going to be the next thing is is coordinating with the potato outfit out there. So we don't hit them at their prime time.
Yeah.
How many weeks are you thinking?
How long do you think this would take once we're ready? How how long do you think it would take to do this?
I mean, the cement stabilizing, a week, week and a half, and then the graveling, another week.
Three weeks?
Yeah, at most, yeah.
I I would say to pull the shoulders and stuff to do it right, I think we're looking at a couple weeks probably, given, I mean, that's worst case.
And how many guys?
If we don't have to do any culvert work and it's just sit in a dozer and bring it up, I'd like probably like two to three. A dozer and a blade to be working together to to make this work. If if we end up doing culverts, I'd like three.
We, I mean, we always talk about pulling our own guys and doing projects. And I suppose this doesn't make a lot of sense, but if you got a guy, if you if you pull three guys and you've got them working on a project for three weeks, is there any way to rotate? Those guys with three other guys so that those three guys aren't off their blades for three weeks and they're well, simply.
We we now have an extra guy.
Right.
Okay, so we have a guy that's kind of rotating through and we can utilize John. Um, he's basically tied up on Mondays at the rest of the week. He can come out, he's volunteered to do that as well, so. We could, if if we're going to continuously go with one thing, we can jump them around and put somebody else in.
And I just say that because that's a complaint that we, oh, I haven't seen a blade out here for three weeks. Well, because we pulled three guys off and of course you haven't seen them.
Exactly.
This way it's, well, I haven't seen our guys out here for a week or a week and a half. Well, we're we're doing a project, but they'll be there and we're going to pull three other guys and.
And I would be there as well, I mean, as much as I can. I mean, I would be there helping, doing whatever I can. Like I said, it's not a horrible job as long as we don't have to do any culvert work or something like that. If we have to replace some culverts or is that, is that possible?
Yes, yes.
Are there culverts down in there?
There's a lot, for sure.
There's got to be a culvert there by the way, the Vanderwors station.
I would think someplace there has to be, so whatever we decide to do there, you know? It's probably under the, under the muck and under the stuff, it's probably not even.
Russ?
Go ahead, Mike.
You know, I I, for cost wise, we don't all, it would be cheaper to haul clay for you guys, I guess, I'm, you know? We just assumed it would be cheaper to pull the shoulders, but if it's cheaper, close, close in cost to haul clay, you know, obviously that would probably be the.
Okay.
Better, better option.
I think it would be much.
Well, you you could have better material for sure to work with, you know, at that point. If you're bringing, importing better material, you're going to be better off, yeah.
That would be less time.
If you're having.
You guys would have to be on it then.
It'd be more expensive.
Possibly.
Well, unless, unless we hire the, would would something like this classify as gravel hauling more or less? If we haul a plate instead of gravel, can we still use the same funding for that?
I'm pretty sure.
So then, yes, then then we could do that, yeah, that would be less time. I mean, we'd still use some guys, but we wouldn't have to have the manpower.
Right.
Versus the the dozer and the blades situation.
It'd be nice to look into that for sure, to see if that would be a better option.
So I'm thinking roughly thirty five to forty thousand yards of clay.
Okay.
If you build it up two feet, then that would get you your twenty eight top.
Okay, okay.
I don't know if that's doable or not.
So so after, if we did do something like that, after that, are we required to have like a four to one all the way down? Is that what the requirements would be?
Not all the way, because you already have like a five to one right now.
Okay.
So you could just do a four to one on top of that.
Okay.
Okay.
This, you're not going to have any topsoil afterwards, that's the only kicker, but.
Yep, yep, yep.
That area, I don't.
Is that part of the specs? You have to topsoil on your four to one?
Not necessarily. I mean, ideally you should, but just something to get some grass established.
Yeah.
And then back to the seeding and stuff there, Craig, you know, that would be the same thing. I mean, we've got to have to see what, I mean. To, some of the areas, you can get a drill in there and seed the grass, you know, sufficiently. As you get closer to Larry and Mark's place there and stuff, that gets pretty, it's full of water right now, I think, for the most part, you know, so.
From Larry's yard to where he's. You can do it. And then probably, what, quarter mile in, on the highway. You can come in and see the ditches.
Maybe have Hider seed some of that, or is that there?
That'd be probably the best option, you know?
That's a different ballgame in there.
So what's the gin- the general feeling of the commission on this? Anyway.
Go ahead, Jim.
No, I I've said enough. It might be easier to rip wrap them shoulders all the way to the fence instead of trying to grow grass down. I mean, I mean, it's tough ground, everybody knows that. I mean, it's it's literal alkali flats into cattails and reeds, it's terrible.
The the chances of it producing quality here after this is not very good, I can tell you that.
I I guess the only thing I would state is, I mean, we approved three building permits at Cattail here today. You know?
Don't get any slower down.
Potato guys built another warehouse. They have a fish cleaning, nothing's going away down there, so. I I'm not saying this is the magic bullet that's going to fix the problems, but it's probably the most feasible project we can do to maybe get some serious results. Otherwise, if we don't do this or at least consider something like this, then what's our other plan? Because the current predicament isn't working. I mean, and it's not just a few unruly residents, I mean, it's it's those folks too, but.
Right.
They're they're, I mean, even the producers down there, you talk to Vanderwors, they're trying to get cattle in and out, trying, it's a struggle. I mean, Mark literally owns his own blade because of that.
And it's a busy place. It's literally the only boat ramp area we have in the whole county that isn't basically paved right up to the boat ramp. So it'd be nice to have something for these recreational guys too, not just the residents down there, but the recreational guys that are not, they're just the weekend warriors or the fishermen.
Yeah.
You know, and you 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 do have a business out there too as well, but they do events, they do. I I mean, I I think, I hate to flush three hundred thousand dollar grant down, I mean, it's a lot of money, but. Cattail Road has been a discussion for years.
Predates all the bus, I want to be honest. It's been the, it's been one of the nightmares of the last five road superintendents and. Half dozen commissioners are better. I mean, it's, it's a problem, you know? It be- because thirty years ago, it probably was a fine road. Now for the action, it's good, it's not.
You know, there's a lot of grain comes out of there.
Yes.
Well, and the and the potato, you know, they 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 employ a lot of people on a temporary basis during harvest and seeding and all, you know?
But I I think Jim's point, it goes missed how much grain comes off in a potato rotation though. Because that's, that's a big deal too, I mean, not not just the potatoes. And then, you know, I mean, there's, there's, there's grazing and other stuff too, I mean, you just, but you're right, I mean, the potatoes, it's huge, but I, it even goes missed on me, how much grain comes out of that place too, so.
Just everything, that's a high travel area, it it really is.
We really got to consider, I mean, I don't, I mean, I feel like this is the best foot forward. I mean, because we all know what the, uh, the atomic option is, is to try and figure out how to pave.
I'd like to explore, like Mike said, this, the hauling into clay and seeing if we can get the same result with better material and and less.
Less.
Guys off blades and less whatever. I mean, anything that we can do to keep butts and seats at blades and get this done with. You know, if it comes out to be the same, but it's a better material, I I think we're miles ahead on that road as well.
Is there clay available to these in those hills?
I've heard there was, but I have not contacted anyone because I didn't know where this was going to go, so I can, when I leave here, I can contact landowners. They did get some for that north-south stretch. Someplace, they got some pretty good material there, so there there's got to be some someplace in that area, but.
Boy, the closer the better, it would help.
Land has become very valuable too, to where even dirt like that becomes to be a, it's a touchy situation nowadays, you know?
Yeah.
All the perches along there, would they be built up and blended in with the elevation change?
They would have to be, yes, yep. There'd have to be some adjustments there, which there's only, there'll only be Larry's. Coming in on the north side, there'd be Larry's. At least you got two of them there.
Then there's farm access to, or field accesses.
Yeah.
Right, you know, but.
Few fields there.
Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that stuff would all have to, you know, be done accordingly as well, so.
It's a good year, wouldn't you?
Yeah, we're not.
In that swamp.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, worst case, if if this was not to come out, which from the results I've seen, it it looks like a good idea, seems to be working good. I'm just saying, worst case, it would at least give us a base to work off of from there to fix some of these spots or something like that, you know? If it if it doesn't hold up, which I have no reason for it not to hold up. And I trust these guys as well. I mean, they they do this for a living, so.
Those three spots that were repaired last year, how did they turn out? Were they good this year? It doesn't seem too bad right now.
Did you drive it?
Yeah, I did.
Are they okay or maybe?
It's a little bit of a bog, a soft spot.
Yeah, it it's okay, it's it's getting better, you know, but all it's going to take is one, one rain event and we're going to be right back to ground zero again.
Yeah.
Fighting with it.
Spray.
Yeah, exactly, so.
So just the Cliff Notes, your opinion is, is if you would put clay on top of that road. Basically, instead of pulling the shoulders, you're talking about raising the base and then getting yourself better material to integrate with the concrete. With hopes of better success, like that's.
That's just my personal opinion, but I I also respect these guys' opinion as well, so if they think it will work. I don't have a problem doing it. I I will do whatever everyone agrees on.
Well, that would make sense rather than pulling that muck up.
You kind of lean that way too, don't you?
I'd say it's a way is better, um, and it could be even cheaper too if the county does it, so, to build it up.
Yeah.
Uh, the other, the other thing is, we're with, um, I think our estimate we had twenty eight feet. I don't know if if you want to narrow it up that much or or if you want to go a little wider.
Might be.
What should it go to, thirty feet?
Well, a a CMC route, you know, for grading it, the subgrade we grade, uh, regrade a CMC route would be thirty two feet.
Thirty two feet.
But this isn't a CMC. Yep, so.
So that'd be probably better than twenty eight, I'm afraid.
It would be easier to blend it in.
Yeah.
Based off the forty foot, you know, it would be easier to make everything, yeah.
What does that do to this estimate?
So we could still only do twenty eight feet wide, you could build it to thirty two.
Okay.
So at least we'd be getting where everybody's pretty much driving.
Yeah. Because some of that will be gravel slop.
Oh, sure.
And you feel that that would be okay doing it that way?
Yeah.
I guess I would be in favor of the thirty two and the only reason for that is it still leaves you the option to pave if there was an opportunity. Where if you do narrow it up too far, then you're like, we put all that work and money into it, now we got to tear half of it down to get down to thirty two, that. I would say you'd want to, the the overall goal should be to leave it in as close a condition of pavement as possible.
Absolutely.
Even if it never happens, because if we widen up to twenty eight and some magic bullet comes up in ten years and we're like, boy, did we really mess up there. Like that, that would be my opinion, would be to try and maintain the ability to pave it at some point.
I go along with Aaron.
I I think.
Bring it to thirty feet, so that's your design if there's ever money to pave that road, go ahead.
I mean, if you're going to spend three quarters of a million even entertaining improving this road, it you start to weigh like how much more to make it.
Yep.
Like, you don't want to just be like, well, only, we're going to handicap the project based on money instead of the overall view. Because that's the stuff we complain about from previous commissioners going, why didn't they just go? It should at least be evaluated. If we don't do it, but we should at least evaluate it, and then if there's a good reason not to, fine, but. I I don't think we should handicap it specifically on just dollar amounts right now, when we obviously, obviously have a few different ideas. That might just be a a lot better decision for a little more money. I it's worth looking at.
So what do we need?
What are we going to do here then?
Do we want to, I mean, do we need a motion to move forward or approve this?
I think we have to make a decision pretty soon if we're even going to move, but like, we have to basically commit to this.
Right.
There's probably a little leeway on where or how.
Project, you have to basically vote on it and just, uh, we have to let the DOT know. That we want the three hundred thousand dollars.
Sixteenth to make, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So what's, so so we're looking at staying at thirty two and we're looking at entertaining the possibility of hauling in clay rather than pulling up shoulders?
We can weigh the options there.
And are you going to throw some numbers together, Mike and John?
Well, it it's hard for us to estimate, you know, what it would cost though, because it's kind of county forces. You know, I don't know what you want to build those out or, you know, how. That's why we, when we originally did it, we just assumed when we visited with Skylar, we'd pull the shoulders because it was just county equipment and and, um. You know, but if if you can truck haul in some some clay and stuff with county forces, it's, you know, probably not much different in price.
I guess the only thing was, is I don't think whatever decision we end up making is going to affect our cost. I guess the only thing was, is I don't think whatever decision we end up making is gonna affect our cost. Benefit from the state, cause we've already kind of, we're, we're getting the max threshold no matter what, right? So we can probably make that decision that we wanna accept it and move forward. And then I think probably the most helpful thing would be is if you could just help us with some quantities. And then Russ from there can try and maybe get some bids or figure out if it's feasible for us or hiring it, like. Don't expect you to put a dollar amount to it, but just if we wanted to go thirty-two at a four to one on that road. How much clay's it gonna take, so that's where your guys' value would be huge, and then once we have that info, we can, we can probably figure out for ourselves how we wanna do it.
So I, I would be willing to make a motion that we accept funds and begin moving forward. And that we, uh, we, just like Aaron said, we, we just need a little bit more information from you guys as far as, uh, quantities and, and. And then we can make an informed decision which direction we wanna go from there, but I would make the motion to accept the funds and move forward on this project.
I'll second that. Is there a second of? You wanna do a roll call? Baker?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Materi?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Just one clarification thing, if a project would fall through, we just basically let, I mean, the dollars really just kinda stay there, right?
No, they would go back to the state.
No, that, right, my, my point, I, the, like, if it's a reimbursement thing, like, they just wouldn't cut us the funds if we don't, like, there's no.
Exactly.
We either have to give it back, like, there's no, just like, well, we took it, we have to do a project, if, if just something falls through and we don't do nothing, the money goes back to the state.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, you're pretty much committed unless, let's say, the bids come in ridiculously priced, you. You're like, well, we don't have the funding, so we don't do it, we, we're backing out of it.
Right, and there might be a portion of costs for some engineering, or like, I mean, but I'm just saying, like, it's. We're committed and we're moving forward, but if something falls through, we might have to pay some fees. Right, if it's one of them deals where it's like, we're not gonna.
Black eye probably with the state, but.
I'm just trying to make it seem like it's not like, well, we're spending a million dollars now, no matter what, cause we took this three, like. If it, if it, if it makes more sense to pay some engineering fees and a few penalties or something, but we get out of it because it didn't work.
Anything else, guys? All good?
Yeah, thank you.
I'll just meet. Sounds good.
Ross, cheers.
Uh, basically, what I got this month here, guys, we got John up in Bismarck today, he's at a, a class for some grant, grant writing stuff. Um, to try to get a handle on some of that. There'll be four of us in Athlete tomorrow, at some training, blade training for shoulder pulling, stuff like that. Um, other than that, we're just trying to get around our roads a couple different times, we have not hauled any gravel yet. Um, we're short in places that still need gravel, no doubt, um, the picks are producing gravel. I mean, not everywhere, but they seem to be working. We had a meeting this morning, the guys that are on their second round with them now and stuff like that, seem to be agreeing to them better and more, saying that they're producing. You know, the initial round was hard, roads were hard, stuff like that, so. There, there seem to be coming around, you know, they're, they're not definitely a fix-all, but they're helping us because of the gravel shortage we had. We're seeing good results on that side of it, for the most part. So, other than that, we're just doing some general maintenance, um. We had a little breakdown with one of our Packer deals, we were gonna get out and start doing culverts here this week, um, he's still working on that little machine out there. The motor mounts were broke off, so he's retapping and stuff like that, that should be done here in the next day or two, and then we're gonna go after the culverts. And just continue blading is the plan.
How's that project coming along with that bridge out by the state? They removed the steel structure, right?
Yeah, they come in, remove the structure, the bridge itself, and then it pretty much was halted. Um, we have a meeting today at one o'clock out there for a haul road agreement, and then Thursday, I believe, is the plan, they're gonna start moving stuff in. And going back to work, there was a, a lapse in there for some reason, I don't have that answer why they came and left, I guess, but. They're gonna continue on Thursday, from my understanding.
Where did the bridge go then?
The bridge, the last I seen is still there, um, Deion Singer committed to it.
Okay.
And, or made an agreement with, uh, the people taking it out, I guess, it, it originally was their bridge, the, the contractor's bridge. Deion Singer spoke for it, for some reason, he wanted it, whatever, so they gave him first option. And my understanding, if he doesn't, or doesn't, decides not to take it, then Aaron Lyer was in line from what I heard from the guys out there. So, we did get the decking off the bridge, we have that out at the shelter, but the actual bridge structure is, is sitting out there, so.
That decking was probably the best part of it left anyway, though, for us, not, I mean.
You know, I never looked at the actual metal, you know, got down and looked at it, um, they pulled it out on one piece, it looks, looks good.
No, but I'm just saying, like, the decking provides us for some value to have. It was relatively newer, I mean, yeah. Couple of years ago, I mean, but I mean, that, that's nice to have around, that could be useful for some stuff.
Forty thousand dollars for the decking the commissioners paid.
Yeah, that's a big deal, yeah, yeah.
Did you wanna bring up Silver Culvert or Black Bridge?
Well, you were out there yesterday, or Monday?
I was out there yesterday morning, yes, yeah. I, uh, I went, I was with Tony, went down there, looked at it and stuff like that. Supposedly, I talked with Gar this morning a little bit again on it, um, according to what Gar says, is that this is like a. Every year situation, or every time you get a heavy rain type deal where the dam overruns, all that water comes down and goes through there, you know? So, we looked at it, um, I am gonna run the hydraulics and stuff on that area. It, it seems like in a heavy rain event, that the culvert situation probably is under culvert, there should, there should be bigger or more culverts there, probably to handle that flow. Um, from what Gar said, there's a lot of, there was cement dumped in there at one time, just, and then holes that were always created, and cavities that show up, like undermining. Supposedly, Alex went out there and just dumped cement down the hole trying to fix it, so. Whatever we decide to do, it sounds like we're gonna have, have fun out there for a while, you know, running into rocks and, and you name it, so.
I think, I think, cause my first year as commissioner, me and Nick went out there, and I think Nick dumped some. Some decent, there was some rock, I think, in Kelly Grin's gravel pit that we kinda got donated or got ahold of, and it was like good sized stuff.
And that's what Tony had did, now Tony went in and fixed it up.
The yearly fix is to dump like basketball sized rock or something in there, but I, I did see the hole about a day before Tony. Cause I just drove down there when I was up at the Braddock Cemetery. I was gonna tech, it was like a Sunday, and I was like, oh, wait till Monday, when Tony texts me, he's like, there's a hole in the road, like, okay, well, everybody knows about it, well then. Like, two days later, we got a rain, and then it was huge, it was even bigger than that, so.
And it is one of them.
See, now there's a slurry cement on top of the rock.
On top of the, or beside the culvert or some, I'm not sure where, but somewhere they came and one of these holes, they just ran a cement truck out and filled it that way, so. I don't know if it's wrapped around the culvert, I can't, I can't answer that.
I wanna say that culvert from what I was told was a reclamation culvert from like a nearby project, like, I don't know. If there was like a hydraulic study, or just, I think they had a culvert, it came out of a road project nearby, or they reclaimed it, and then they. Cause like I said, the history of that area is that that used to be called Black Bridge, cause that was an old, like, a black looking bridge, and then when the. To my knowledge, unless I'm wrong, the county tore it out and put that culvert in, because the bridge was ready to go or was crumbling, and so.
What is the diameter of the culvert?
I never actually imagined it's gonna be.
Four footer, maybe, it's, it's big, but it's not that big.
It is, it's a sufficient culvert, but yet, maybe it should have another one beside it the same size, or I gotta do some digging on that as well, you know.
Trouble with this road is, this is one of them special section line roads. It almost should be like a minimum maintenance or like a gravel road, but it never got built up, but it's highly used, I mean. If that is a majorly used, like, you drive that thing, there's very little grass growing on it, it gets driven hard, I mean.
And.
So. Well, it's private property on both sides, you're not supposed to fish it, but I know some people that have fished it over the years. I'm just saying, like, yeah. I'm friends with the landowners, they don't mind, but right, it is, like, for locals, it's, it's kind of a modest little fishing spot, it's, it's a. And, and that's why I think the county is always kind of.
Taking care of it.
And I, I spoke to Gar a few times about it, it used to get bladed like once a year, because he always bladed that road going to the cemetery.
I was gonna say, where's the cemetery?
That's right there, and that's like the city cemetery, the Catholic ones on the north end, and then that's more like the, the other denominations. But that road is really only built up and decent until about the cemetery, and after that, it kinda gets left. But, right where that crop ground meets pasture to the west.
Yep.
There's a hill there, or a, right there, to the left a little more, right before the creek.
Yeah.
And Gar quit blading it, I think already in Alex's time, or not during Nick's, because. Every time they bladed it, it would wash out, and that hill went from having a cut like this to it just, and they, they quit, cause it's pure sand there on that hill, so. So, I mean, that road has a history of some county maintenance, I mean, it, and that's why they're asking, because I think it's always been, you know.
That's all sand in there.
That hill is anyway, it is pure sand there, it's, it's, yep. It's like a silty sand, it's like low sand, it's not even granular, it's pretty tough, so it's, but.
So would we have a big culvert at the shop?
We would, yeah. Yes, we got some used culverts that we could use for something like that, yeah.
And eliminate the head.
Well.
We're still ahead.
The, the main thing you're gonna run into here is even right now, there's, there's a sufficient amount of water that's flowing, it's, and it's not like it's, it's flowing to where. To get in there and get your compaction and stuff around that culvert, it's gonna be interesting, you're gonna have to almost build a copper dam or something and divert it. And then get in there and pack everything, open it up, and then jump to the other side, or, I don't know, there's, there's gonna be a little technique involved with that.
Gets very low on a dry year though, like, if the dam's not spilling, and that's when you can maybe play the weather a little bit, like, and, and I think. Unless you can, I, Tony fixed it pretty decent with his payload or. Like, I don't think it's a risk to the public or anything.
Not right now, no.
So I, I don't think it's like, we gotta go in there next week and do it, we can probably play the weather, and maybe you'll get, get into a dry spell where the dam's not spilling, and that. That thing will basically pool up, there might be some water on the culvert, but it probably won't flow anymore. Once the dam's not.
How many days would you suspect?
A week. I would say a week with a couple guys, just depending on what you run into, and it's not so much set in the culverts, it's when you go in there to dig. I mean, if, if all these objects are in there, you gotta dig around them, through them, all that good stuff.
Get it out of there too, you know, if you just pile it up, you have to haul it out.
And you might have to bring some fill back in, depending on how deep, I mean, it's, it's hard really to know what's our number at this point, you know.
Another thing about that is, I think you have some neighboring landowners that would probably help out, like, as far as like material. You, like, you know, you got that Grant's pit over there, Tony's around, some, somebody would probably have some material we could utilize. It'd be like Kelly Grin's back, I don't know the ownership situation of that, but there's aggregate back there and stuff that. Like, not necessarily that we need their gravel, but maybe some fill rock or some, some finds or something that we can maybe purchase, that. I would, I would think the landowners would be very hospitable in that area.
And they would be able, it would take a run with a blade or two, but if we did open this up and stuff and ran into some. They can access it from the west side as well, so we wouldn't be shutting anybody off as far as that, to where they couldn't get in there if needed, you know.
The only other consideration would just be if we're, um, willing to work with, I mean. Tony didn't really ask for reimbursement, but he did mention he's probably got about fifty hours into it, and, and some, quite a bit of material. I, I, you know, if the board's interested in doing something like that, just to. It's tough, cause it's a section line, and I know we held a hard line, but this is one of them weird type roads that, in another scenario. Maybe would almost got fixed up, but got left by, I mean, it's a very, very busy, public section, like, it's. It gets used a ton by the sportsmen's type, there's several landowners, there's lots of people like. That road is, is one of them, like I said, it's one of them section lines that kinda is in this gray area of. And that's why I think the county's always put some effort into maintaining it, cause it's, and it's a major, you know, waterway off the Braddock Dam, and that goes all the way to Long Lake.
Other, other than that, I don't have anything else.
How'd the gravel prospecting go?
The one we did there with Leon out there did not turn out.
Nothing?
Um, yeah, we have a couple other guys that I've been. Contact with here and stuff. Uh, he was having some trouble with his truck, he has since got it fixed, and he's up and running again. I just talked to him last week, actually, he said, let's get together and we'll pull up for some more, so.
Have you got a contract or?
I do not, and I have to give a Joel on that.
Russ, I'll, uh, if you would, I talked to Josh, there's a road down by State Line Resort.
Okay.
A short, it's only, I don't know, it's the old, old corner of eighteen oh four, before they made the round corner. And that road goes to a campsite, I mean, uh, and it's, I guess it hasn't been bladed since. Twenty-one. Yeah, it's just a short piece, and, and they're not expecting a lot, maybe once a year.
So in between, like, the state liners over here, and that's, uh, what's his name's little place over here, right?
John Seymour.
Jim, Jimmy Barisoul place?
Yep, that's it.
In between those two places?
Yeah, it goes, yeah, and, uh, I mean, it's not something you gotta do every. Every time you blade down there, and it is out of the way, so, you know, so, but it could get done once in a very good season.
I think the reasoning for maybe putting a hold on that was, I don't know if we could verify that that was public right away.
Yeah, Josh.
I don't know, that's why I'm just curious if that, I mean, cause that, uh, uh, on its face, it doesn't look like it, but it could definitely have an easement of some kind, I don't know.
He said he checked it out, wasn't before.
It just died in the air dish and went around the old.
Right, but is there still an easement there, is my question?
Could be, uh, Core.
Part of that looks like it's on a section line almost, but then once it deviates out, that'd be some curiosity, so.
That brings up a little, another thing is, out here at Beaver Bay, some of you might have seen it, but the road's left off again. On the, the road going into the, on the south side of Beaver Bay, when you turn west, or whatever that is, southwest. The road's left off, and it's probably a couple feet from the actual road itself. Initially, I was working with the Corps on coming up with a solution, and there's been plans that have been drawn up in twenty-eleven. To actually move the road to the, further to the south. Um, we had some engineering done and stuff, had the road staked out, all that, and after that situation. Uh, John Caseman, who owns the land where the road would be moved, came in and, and kinda. He didn't say no, but he said that the road or the land was very valuable, so. Um, since then, I've been kinda back and forth, but I've lost my contact with the Corps. I don't know if the guy was part of this Doge situation that took place. But I've emailed and I've never heard anything back.
KJ said a new guy took over and another guy retired. Cause I visited with him about, somebody asked me about a low water ramp, um, that had gone through here, kinda fell apart. And so I asked him about that, he said there's a new contact for the Corps, get ahold of KJ, he's got a number for a guy, he's, he's new. And he, he was gonna kinda feel him out too about this low water.
Okay.
Just to get the permit for the low water, whether we use it or not, at least we can get it from the Corps and then.
I think Walt retired.
Yeah.
The guy that was handling.
Yeah, this guy's name was John.
Okay.
So Walt was there. I think it's been gone for five years.
Yeah, it's been a few years, I know that, and then I don't know if it was a new guy, cause the other, the other one we were dealing with was the one out of Pierre. He's kind of a little more the higher up the chain too, I'd have to find his contact, but.
Yeah, and I know the guy, yeah, exactly, but anyway, um, we are trying to figure out that they weren't against. Going in and fixing it and stuff like that, we did have to apply for a permit and things for it. Um, and they weren't against it, if we're gonna leave the road as is and where it is, the only thing is, it's been fixed. Can you help me out, Francis, three, three times?
I have known before, we fixed it once, and the reason we did, we had gotten a bid for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to stabilize the cables. And the same caseman at that time said also, he wasn't interested in selling, but it was a large amount of money. So what the Corps did, they donated that site right there, and they allowed us to pull that dirt. And what I had done at that time, the county was leasing my excavator, I got a vibrator that goes on the end of it. And we just pushed that, uh, put that dirt down in there, we just vibrated it in, so that's held for four or five years, I suppose.
And I know Nick and the guys were out there prior to that, at least once, if not twice, so it seems to be, uh.
They don't end.
Well, there must be a spring underneath it or something pushing it out, but it's not.
Touch that in years, but yet it keeps moving, right?
It's not the river doing it, that's for sure, but something is letting it loose there, so.
I had it in the pasture, in the northwest of there, east of there. I had it in the pasture, in the northwest of there, east of there, they just keep sloughing off.
Yeah.
Well, Nick had all that mountain rock down to that one fault, and it just took all that rock and shoved it down.
Just shoved it down.
And that's what it did, now the fabric and everything just slid down the hill to the bottom again, so, you know, it's it's nothing that can't be fixed. But it's just a reoccurring problem again that we have to deal with, but.
It'd be ideal if they could bring this road where it is, and concretely, wampus, but it's steep.
Yeah, well, and that's where it goes, if you go out there, when you turn, you do use the same approach, and just to the south there, Josh, a little bit, on the south side of the road. Right, right there, we'd have to move forward the power poles to make this all work where they staked it. And then that's where the road would actually be pushed over to that part of it, and you'd have to get rid of the hill and and make the back slope and everything work there too, but.
Didn't we look into piling once?
That was at two hundred and sixty.
That was the one, okay, cause that's why I thought that was about the only, I mean, that was maybe a, that was a pretty good idea, but it was gonna be expensive, but.
I don't know what it would cost today, but if you guys like to try to pull a little bit, uh, see if I can afford it, but it would be expensive.
And there's utilities, like right here, there's fiber optic right in the bottom of this ditch and stuff, um.
Oh, boy.
So, the the power. The power poles wasn't even too bad, it was twelve to fourteen to have that taken care of, I didn't think that was, I was expecting worse, to be honest with you, you know.
Well, rural water's almost gotta come in there too for the lower part of.
They, they're right there as well, but they agreed to let us go over the top, as long as we don't take nothing off and go any lower, we can go over the top of their line, they said, so. Um, the other one would just be the fiber optic, and actually, John was with them, and I don't think we ever did get a price to move it, because we just kind of. Kinda put it on standstill till we figured out a a permanent solution there, you know. So, yeah, other than that, that's, that's all I got.
Okay. Ross, you wanna go to the restroom?
No, I gotta go, there's things to do, Ross, we gotta get on gravel.
Francis, you're next on the journey.